Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 26th, meeting of the Olympia City Council. Roll call, we have Mayor Cheryl Selby excused and Councilmember Jim Cooper excused. And Young Quinn is attending via Zoom. Right, yes. I would welcome an approval of the agenda.
I moved.
Second. Any discussion on the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? We've got an agenda, and that brings us to special recognition. The first item is a proclamation recognizing October as Walk to School Month. We're going to have Councilmember Madrone read the proclamation, and then we'll have Carrie come up and present.
Whereas walking to school can build activity into a child's daily routine, improving health and school performance. And whereas walking instead of driving students to school in private vehicles can help us reach greenhouse gas emission reduction targets identified in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And whereas the City of Olympia passed a resolution to achieve a goal of net zero emissions by 2040 in coordination with Olympia High School Climate Action Club. And whereas the City of Olympia constructs sidewalks, crosswalk improvements, and neighborhood pathways to help students safely walk to school. And whereas the City of Olympia adopted the Transportation Master Plan, which prioritizes sidewalk and enhanced crosswalk projects based on how close they are to destinations like schools, parks, and transit stops. And whereas members of the Olympia Police Department and Olympia Fire Department join Olympia youth in walk-to-school events. And whereas the city's street safety plan prioritizes safety of vulnerable users of the street. And whereas in the month of October, youth, family members, and community leaders around the world are joining together for walk-to-school events. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council hereby proclaims the month of October 2023 as Walk to School Month. In the City of Olympia and encourages families, school employees, and community leaders to show children that walking is a fun, safe, and healthy way to get to destinations in their neighborhoods, whether they are schools, parks, or other places. All community leaders can, when driving, contribute to a culture of pedestrian safety year-round by slowing to 20 miles per hour in school zones and stopping for pedestrians who are trying to cross the street. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 26th day of September 2023, Olympia City Council, Clark Gilman, Mayor Potem.
Now, we're going to welcome Carrie Wilson, Inter-City Transit's Walk and Roll Supervisor to the podium.
Alright, so Walk and Roll's program is an education and encouragement to program with Inter-City Transit to encourage Thurston County residents to get around by walking, biking, rolling, and using public transit. This school year, we are once again partnering with the Olympia School District to help schools organize walk and roll to school events. These events are held in October as a way to celebrate Walk to School Month, and many of the schools continue the events throughout the year. These events increase safety, build community, reduce traffic congestion, and improve the air quality around schools by encouraging families to walk and bike instead of drive. It also provides students with an opportunity to learn and practice pedestrian safety skills and build some physical activity into their day. This year, we are helping McKennie Elementary, Centennial, Roosevelt, Garfield, and Pioneer organize events. I would like to recognize the support that we get from the Olympia Police Department and the Olympia Fire Department. Having these folks come out to the events makes them extra special and fun for students and their families, and I'm sure you saw some of them on the slides. As always, we invite all City Council members to come out and participate in the Walk and Roll to School events, and I did send out a schedule with some details earlier this week. And so, thank you for recognizing October as Walk to School Month.
Right, any questions or comments for Carrie? Well, we'll just, I know, I know Councilmember Madrone has been on a walking trip to school and, and actually, aye?
Yep.
And so, hooray. Thank you.
It's a lot of fun.
Hey, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie, for coming in this evening. Alright. Next up on the agenda, we have a proclamation with props, recognizing Arbor Day 2023. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Partially to read the proclamation for us.
Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day called Arbor Day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed annually in Olympia and around the world. And whereas urban forests provide multitude of environmental and public health benefits such as cleaner air and water, battling the effects of climate change, reducing flooding and soil erosion, minimizing urban heat island effect, improving mental health, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, beautify our neighborhoods, and our identifying characteristics of the Pacific Northwest landscape. And whereas planting trees brings communities together, connects people to nature, and is a source of joy and hope. And whereas Olympia, Washington, has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 30th year. Arbor Day encourages our community to preserve, plant, and care for trees, and to participate in supporting healthy forest canopy for this and future generations. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, on this day, 26th September 2023, Olympia City Council, Mayor Potem, Clark Gilman.
Thanks, and now I'm going to call Kim Foley, our Associate Planner in Public Works Water Resources, and Jason Johns, the Urban Forestry Program Manager in Community Planning and Development for the city, to come up to the podium and tell us about Arbor Day. Oh, and I'm sorry, you have another presenter you can introduce.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kim Foley with Water Resources Environmental Services Section. I'm also here with Bruce Molten with Parks, one of our urban foresters, and Jason Johns from Community Planning and Development. We're here representing the interdepartmental team that pulls off the Arbor Day celebration and is also responsible for helping to manage our urban forests in both natural areas and in our urban spaces. And just briefly, I think the proclamation really spelled it out, but we have so much new knowledge in recent years showing the connection between a healthy, well-maintained urban forest and thriving communities, things like cleaner air, cleaner water, better economic outcomes for businesses in the urban core, resilience to a changing climate, more walkable and bikable streets, and pedestrian-friendly streets, and so on. We know that an equitable tree canopy is better for our communities overall and for building resilience to a changing climate. These are among just the many reasons why we celebrate Arbor Day. I will also introduce and invite Jason Johns, who is our new urban forester with the City of Olympia. He can speak a little bit more about the Arbor Day celebration itself and a little bit about himself.
Howdy, y'all. Before I speak about myself, I'd like to acknowledge that my predecessor, Shelley Bentley, did an amazing job for y'all over her tenure, tenure, and she's going to be awarded the J. Butts Friend of Trees Award for her service. I mean, event that we're going to have in Squawson Park. I'd like to speak briefly as to why the proclamation you just made is important. It is one of the standards that we have to meet for our Tree City USA award. There are three other standards that I'd like to speak about, if I may. The first is that Olympia has a dedicated urban forestry program, and we do have urban forestry personnel, as Ken mentioned, across three departments, including Water Services, that is Public Works, Parks, and then also myself, kind of a lone holdout over there in Community Planning and Development. You can find me on the second floor, I'm in Shelley's old cube if you ever need me. That said, we also must meet a tree ordinance standard, which y'all have met for a number of decades. Most recently, it was updated in 2016, of course, to come into compliance with other state codes. And then the third standard is you have to spend $2 per capita. I'm happy to report that Shelley calculated it last year, City of Olympia spends $20.98 per capita on urban forestry, which is an laudable amount. Y'all definitely deserve praise for that. That said, you've just made the Arbor Day proclamation, which is the fourth standard. And also, we have to have a celebration. So, City of Olympia is the city that celebrates Arbor Day not once on Washington State Arbor Day, not twice on National Arbor Day, but thrice on Olympia Arbor Day, this upcoming weekend at Squawson Park. From 10 to 2, we're going to be having our, hosting our Olympia Arbor Day event. It is ahead of the planting season, so that's kind of like a kickoff for our, our tree planting season. And with that, I will introduce the man who does all the work, Bruce Molten, who is on our urban forestry team, who maintains our city street trees and also street trees along our 10 arterial.
Yeah, as Jason said, I'm the guy who gets up close and personal with the urban forest. And it's certainly heartening to see our leaders recognize and remember the importance of our, our trees in our city. All I can say is, should we ever forget how important our trees are, then we have a really good team here to, to remind us.
I believe now we're set up for a little photo opportunity, and we have, these trees here are for City Council to take home. Should you want to and have the space to plant wherever you'd like. So, we'll grab those and I believe Kelly's going to help us with the photo.
Well, maybe we can line up a way so we can see the Zoom screen, too.
They also give away an Arbor Day.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
So, that's this Saturday from 10 to 2, right? At Squawson Park? Alright. And meet at the Rose Garden Shelter to start the event. Alright, thank you, thank you. And the plants will all be watered. There's thunder on the roof for the TV audience. The, we're up to public comment next. And during this portion of the meeting, community members may address the City Council regarding items related to city business, including items that are on the agenda. Individual comments are limited to two minutes or less, and the council will listen and will respond, and, and at the end of the comments, and we can ask questions of staff, but we don't have a two-way conversation at this moment, that doesn't mean we can't follow up and have a, a two-way conversation. So, first on the list this evening is Janice Carter.
Before I start, I'd like to say we have some pictures and videos, if you'd like to view them.
Okay. Let's see. We'll, we'll have Jay help collect, if, if. Okay. Oh, absolutely. So, if that's okay, while you're making your presentations, we'll pass the phone along and look at the photos?
Thank you.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, I'm Janice Carter, and I live at Lark, which is a retirement community behind the Olympia Orthopedics, and I've lived there five years. This is home to about 160 residents, but we are being invaded. We're surrounded on three sides by the attic homeless. Now, I might add here, I'm not against homeless and their rights, but these people that are on the drugs do not belong here. Here's reasons why. Our backyard this summer has exploded to teens, prostitutes, old men looking for a hiding place to do their drugs. They have found just that in the woods bordering our property. They have stolen two vehicles, there's been multiple break-ins, license plates, catalytic converters, scooters, bikes, patio furniture, rugs, whatever they can get their hands on, and the list goes on and on. They've set several fires, they sleep at our doorstep, they use our trash room for their personal use, and they're brave enough to come right into our clubhouse. Twice, they've driven their person, their stolen vehicles, they've jumped the curb, and they've gone down at high speed on our walking trail, which has always got somebody on it. And if that's not enough, they, one of them has taken their bicycle, driven it down the hall, knocked a resident on her back, hurt her hip, sent her to the doctor. Really luckily, so far, there's been no real serious injuries or deaths, but our safety has been seriously compromised. We're victimized 24/7. Feel free to check with the police department on the hundreds of comments and complaints that we have made, and to Lark also. I hate to see what's becoming of West Side, but I'm wondering, how much more do we have to endure? Can you please help? I don't, I don't know where else to go. But I'd like to leave you with a Bible verse, Ephesians 3:10, "Those who do not work do not eat."
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Next, we have Barbara Arnold.
Hello, my name's Barbara Arnold, and I'm also living at Lark. Saturday, two weeks ago, four of us from Lark went out to check the homeless camp next to our building. It was very sad to see all the garbage in horrible living conditions. There were even children's belongings. We understand that this camp is not as large as others, but it, it sits on a water runoff pond that was completely fenced off before they broke through it. The pond is now a place for all of their garbage, and it is used for their bathroom. This pond will soon have water in it, and we understand that it sits above Allison Springs, which, which may be a source of municipal water. This homeless camp is polluting the pond and Allison Spring. Most homeless living, they seem to be content to live in tents and are not looking for housing. We watch daily the buying and selling of drugs, they even park cars and trucks that they've stolen in our parking lots. The police are there often, they have even had a stabbing and a rape recently in the camp. The few homeless that aren't addicts live in fear of being beat up, stole from, and worse. We understand from being here two weeks ago that the city is doing what they can, and we want to make sure you're aware of this encampment also, so it will go on your list to be removed and cleaned up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Lydia Findley.
My name is Lydia Findley. I was assaulted by a homeless man on my own property at the Lark Retirement Community. I was chased off my back porch, which sits half a story up from the ground floor. I was chased off my back porch and out my front door while I watched this guy pound his fist, spit, and was going to throw my wrought iron chair through my glass door. I saw him throw my chair down into the parking lot. I said, "The cops are coming," when he saw me on the phone, he left. He was arrested. Two weeks later, a homeless guy was same building on our third floor in the hallway masturbating. They have no fear of anything because they think we're old, we will not fight back. When they took over the pond on that spring, that pond that has spring water in it, it's filled with feces and garbage. It was, before they came, it was beautiful, had nothing but white daisies all through it, not anymore. I've worked hard all my life to get retirement, and I started working at 15. This is not what I expected my retirement to come to. I fear for my safety as they get more physically aggressive. And the only way I could do is protect myself by all means, whatever means I need to use to protect myself, I will do so if we don't get no help. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Findley. That concludes public comment for this evening. Any response from Council? Councilmember Madrone?
I want to thank you all for coming in and sharing your experience with us. It takes a lot to come in here and be a vulnerable like that, and I'm curious, I'm curious if we have, if we could get some information from staff on, you know, the state of this area of town. I know we were, just last time, we had public comment, we were talking about Percival Cove, and I'm just curious to know what we know about this location.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and Councilmembers, for the record, Rich Hoey, Assistant City Manager, and I also want to thank them for coming in tonight to share their concerns, certainly concerning to hear some of the things that they shared with you. I believe, I'm going to talk to them after public comment to get a little bit more information about exactly where they're talking about, but I believe this relates to the area around the Forest Brook community. And so, we are aware of homeless, larger homeless encampment is on that, it's on private property. There was recently an effort working with city code enforcement and OPD staff to trespass and remove an encampment that was on the private property in this area. So, I want to make sure that we're talking about the same spot, but there was some efforts that were recently undertaken there. So, we'll, we'll gather some more information and share that with the council once we can do a little bit more fact-finding. But I spoke with Deputy Chief Parker, and so, we'll both step out into the, into the lobby and, and talk further with these residents about what they're experiencing and how the city may be able to help with the situation.
Thanks, Rich, and thanks again for coming in and sharing. I'm really sorry that you're all going through that, and I'd like to see what we can do about it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Partially?
Thank you, Councilmember Madrone, for that. I chatted with these folks before public comment and indicated that if they wanted to stay through the rest of the meeting, Agenda Item 6B is our One Community Plan update, which is talking about our homelessness response. But I'm glad you're going to be speaking with Rich and the Deputy Chief, so thank you.
Alright, so that concludes public comment and brings us to the consent calendar for this evening. Are there any questions, comments, or polls from the consent calendar? Alright, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as published.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, and opposed, nay? Okay, we have the consent calendar approved. And this brings us to other business. Item 6A is approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a petition in support of a proposal to form a downtown improvement district. And Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director, is going to tee up this conversation for us.
Wonderful. Thank you, Council. Again, my name is Mike Reed, I'm the Economic Development Director, and we'll start the presentation. So, before you tonight is a resolution to authorize the city manager to sign the petition on behalf of the city as a property owner inside of the district that is being proposed for a downtown improvement district. So, before you move into a little bit more detail, I always think it's helpful to provide some context concerning some of the work. So, I think a lot of this actually comes all the way back to the downtown strategy that the City of Olympia led and created in 2000s. It was finalized in 2017. This is really the bedrock for the work that we're doing for improving downtown. And it is, really hangs on these six tenants here. I won't read them to you, but this is what we are looking for, and this is ultimately how we define success in our downtown. This plan was created through a significant amount of stakeholder outreach and community participation. I also want to note that downtown is always evolving, and over the last decade or so, we've seen a significant change in downtown. That really was spurred in probably the late 2000s by some actions of, of public investment. So, we saw the Children's Museum, we saw Lot do an expansion, we saw this beautiful building here. So, public investment, we then saw private investment follow that, and we've seen that, that growth of market rate housing and additional development occurring downtown. We've then seen continued investments in improvements in infrastructure downtown. An example of that would be the recently completed Franklin Street Improvement Project. We are always working to preserve the unique qualities that we have of downtown and leverage and build off those. And truly, over the last three years, we have really bolstered our relationship and partnership with the Olympia Downtown Alliance, who is really, I think, a critical partner of ours during the pandemic in terms of providing relief and, and assistance to our businesses downtown. So, in the conversation of a downtown improvement district, the first thing that I think that needs to be known is, we have one, actually. We do have a parking business improvement area, which technically is a downtown improvement district. Our current PBIA or Parking Business Improvement Area is made up of, it's, it's a business-based assessment. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the pluses and minuses of that kind of assessment and why it's different than what's in front of you. But in the PBIA, we assess the individual businesses. Our PBIA has nine seated board members that are, are business owners or employees of the downtown businesses. We have approximately about 480 ratepayers in downtown, and we actually have to collect that information on a shoe leather sort of model. We've got to figure out what businesses have opened up and what businesses have left, and keep that assessment role on an annual basis. Our approximate budget is about $100,000, and the way that we have it set up right now is the City of Olympia manages the PBIA. So, it is a relatively staff-intensive program in the sense that we do all of the management of the assessment role. So, determining who's in and who's out, when they've left, do they need to pay, how much should they pay? We also have a staff person that is the board liaison that does the agendas, the minutes, meeting with the board president to determine what would be on the agenda and attend those meetings. We also do all of the contracting. So, because the PBIA is not an entity that can contract in, in of itself, the city staff do all of the necessary contracting associated with that. We do the budgeting with them as well, and we roll that into the annual. We do the budgeting with them as well, and we roll that into the annual budget. Some of the efforts that occur at the PBIA are individual projects, and so oftentimes that can lead to staff actually doing the project management. We do the billing and invoicing for the PBIA. Also, when those invoices go out and there's a question like, "Why is my number this much?" Or "What is the PBIA and why do I have to pay it?" Staff field those calls as well. This is the current total assessment for if the city were to sign on and take a affirmative action tonight. These are all of the properties within the district that the city owns. We are actually one of the larger property owners in the district. So I don't have a full count on exactly how many properties, I think it's over 40, but you can see I've broken those down into three sort of areas. We have Office of Community Vitality or Facilities being one, and that's about 13,000. So that's assets that the city owns that could be City Hall or other things, other buildings that we may own. Then we have parks properties and parking. And those are really the three categories, if you will, of properties that we own. The total there is 33,352 would be our assessment for the district. From a process standpoint, I'd like to make it clear, this is about a, we will need to take really three actions as a council to, to complete this process if that's what is intended. And right now, we're actually only on step one of the council actions. So the petition has gone out to the property owners. The step that the council would take tonight would be to authorize us to sign the petition. If there is a 60% threshold that is met in terms of the amount of property owners willing to sign the petition, it would be submitted back to us for verification, and we would hold a public hearing in which the council would then take an action associated with approving an ordinance related to that public hearing. After that, we then would need to present a management agreement between the city and the Olympia Downtown Alliance as the operator of the, of the agreement. And then finally invoicing can occur after that point. And so what I want to really key in on is a lot of the questions that I do hear sometimes internally are actually more about the management agreement than they are about the petition process. And so I want to make sure that tonight, we understand it's just on the petition process and authorizing the city manager to be able to sign that. We will need to come back to council for the approval of a management agreement. That management agreement really is what identifies the relationship between the Olympia Downtown Alliance and the city in terms of managing the actual DID. Everything from when is the invoicing cycle, what, are there admin fees that would need to be paid? How do we manage questions or complaints about what is the DID and what is my money going for? Who's managing assessment roles? All of that would ultimately be captured into the management agreement. I think it would be slightly premature to start negotiating this and deploying all the city staff necessary to negotiate all of this prior to actually getting closer to that 60% threshold. As an example of some of the things that we would think about in a management agreement, currently, our current model, the city manages the assessment role, meeting management, contracting, budgeting, project management, billing and collections, complaints, comments, questions about billing. And then ultimately, we don't, we don't pay an assessment in this model. We also don't charge this model any admin overhead. So there is no admin fee currently charged to the PBIA model. In a future model, these are the things that I would imagine that we would look in that conversation of a negotiation on a management agreement would be, could the ODA manage the assessment role? Would they do the meeting management? It's very obvious if you move to the billing and collection, that is something that we would have to retain. That's per RCW is a requirement on us. So, and I, then the question would be, would we also be contributing into the assessment as well? One other attachment that is a portion of your staff report is the baseline level of service agreement. So the intention of a downtown improvement district, it's to be additive, not supplant. So the city does a lot for downtown. We've got a number of programs. And what, what I think that the, the petition and those that would be looking to sign it, they want to know, hey, if we decide to tax ourselves, you're not gonna just automatically cut all of the services that you have been providing and then say, "Now just use your own money." So we had to negotiate and present a baseline service level of agreement that is attached to your doc, to your staff report, and it includes all of the programming that we support for downtown. I did want to note in there, and we've talked about this previously and presented before, we did make a change to the ambassador program. And that is referenced in the baseline level of service agreement, and I think it's fair to announce. We'll be putting more information and communications effort about this change in the very near future. But we will be looking to expand our crisis response unit to incorporate two dedicated walking crisis responders in the downtown corps. And that, we're looking at that change in early January 2024. And that is really as a response to the kinds of calls that we were seeing the ambassadors being deployed to. We're really kind of in that crisis response realm, and it feels better to actually have them tied into that program. So that is referenced in the baseline level of service agreement. So with that, I will invite Todd Cuts to come up and give you a little bit more information. We did have our study session earlier this summer about this. Todd will pick up his presentation from that point. So we won't go all over everything that was discussed back then, but bring you up to date to where we are now.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, appreciate your time tonight. Before I get started, I did want to introduce our downtown improvement district steering committee co-chair, Matt DeBoer with Timberland Bank as well. So he's really helped to shepherd this process through. Ron Thomas, our other co-chair, couldn't be here tonight. As you are aware, we had a pretty robust participation from property owners, including, well, property owners in addition to city officials, Councilmember Partially participated as well. So we thank her for that participation. My click and clicker right here, got it, okay. So you've seen a timeline and several slides in the past about where we've been with the, with the DID. And it went, it's gone all the way back to 2019, 2020. So a lot of work has gone into this, a lot of process, a lot of conversations with council members and our stakeholders, downtown property owners, businesses, nonprofits. So where we're at right now, the most recent meeting we've had from a public perspective, if the city has been the PBI meeting on August 2nd. The PBI did vote in support of the downtown improvement district. This includes the understanding that the PBI would dissolve should the downtown improvement district come to fruition. We commenced our petition campaign on August 18th. We, so we're about halfway through that petition campaign. We've come to the City Council Finance Committee and received a recommendation from that committee. I'm sure we'll hear about that as well on August 30th. So here we are tonight on September 26th. Mike talked about the steps that we've been through. In addition to that, I will mention that last night, I was in front of the Port of Olympia Commission, and the Port Commission did authorize signatures on their petitions for their executive director. So just by way of reminder, what we're looking at here is the proposed downtown improvement district map. So the purple is the core area, the green is the non-core area. Assessments and commencement, services would be commensurate with the assessments in those areas, and I'll talk about that assessment methodology in a moment. So first of all, from a budget perspective, the total budget for the DID is proposed at $575,000 a year. Clean, safe, and beautiful services constitute almost 75% of that at $405,000. Assisting small businesses, a little bit more flexibility there at $77,500. And that would include special projects, place making, trainings, that sort of thing, potential support of special events downtown, a management administration fee, which would be that contract with the Olympia Downtown Alliance, and the goal of putting away 2.5% of our operational budget each year in reserves. And finally, annual cost of assessment methodology, as we've talked about before, it's a blend of frontage, so sidewalk space in front of parcels downtown and assessed value of those parcels, which is coming directly from the Thurston County Assessor's Office. We have commercial, residential, and nonprofit. And as I mentioned, that core and non-core, so core is assessed at twice as much as the non-core and will receive a commensurate level of service. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
And I would invite Councilmember Partially, who participated in the process, to lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I participated not only in this process, but the original that was going on prior to the pandemic. And I think the pandemic changed us and our views on how powerful public-private partnerships can be and what we could do with downtown by doing that. And as such, I also believe that the tenor in the PBIA, our own assessment district, has changed. It was a bare majority in 2020 or 2019 when PBI voted. This year, we only had one no and one abstention. Because I believe the small business owners are seeing the fruit of these kinds of public-private partnerships and really leveraging what we can do and making our dollars go further. The thing that struck me the most was hearing repeatedly about Tacoma's. And when they went back at their tenure, I forget, is that called reassessment or signing up again? They doubled the number of property owners that wanted to be assessed. It was doubling, that's not insignificant.
The renewal, yes.
Yeah, the renewal, and showing that the value of the first 10 years was noted by those who were not assessed. And I think in the first time around, this has not changed, I'll end with this, that the ODA Steering Group really worked with us to try to make adequate representation on the board of small business owners, both those that own practice, or practices, sorry, veterinarian, but those that own the properties and those that don't, but that also those that own property and are running a business in town make up the board. And I think that was a big gift from the ODA and the Steering Committee to begin with. And I think that's made a difference. I'm, I'm very much in for it, and I've liked the process this has been through.
Thank you, Councilmember Partially. We have Councilmember Nguyen, followed by Madron, and then Payne. All right.
Hey, thanks so much, Mike and Todd, for coming to present on this. I'm starting to feel like I'm kind of memorizing parts of this presentation, seeing it so much. I really appreciate your work on this. And also, I understand that there has, there was some slowing down and to ensure that, you know, you get people the information that they, that they needed, not only council, but then also PBIA or Parking Business Improvement Area members. And I really want to uplift the letter in our council packets that we received from the PBIA. Yes, there was a majority yes votes, one nay and one abstention, although they also had some really, you know, really great comments for all of the reasons they voted yes and all the reasons where they feel like there's room for improvement even still and, and what they're hopeful of. And so while we got a majority vote, the PBIA has been, you know, has been of service for, for some time to the city. And I hope that we'll find ways to continue to, to build upon and, you know, not have their feedback go in death years. So sort of along the same lines of that, I have heard through these different presentations or different times that I've received this presentation in different spaces, that there is some, you know, hope and encouragement that while the PBIA as a body will be going away, should this, the DID pass, but there is some hope that PBIA members will then in fact join the DID board, I suppose. So my question is for Todd, I believe. Is there something that I heard in the PBIA meeting when this was discussed? Is, is there an opportunity for PBIA members that would like to serve on the DID, be able to, without needing to apply, be able to serve on that committee straight away? I understand that there's some, it's, the structure is so there's like sort of certain people with certain experiences that we want, certain backgrounds, but I'd be really interested in that.
Sure, thank you. I don't think we have the slide tonight talking about the governance structure, but we certainly talked about that in the past. And yes, you are correct, so we have 15 voting board members currently proposed for the DID, five of which would be business owners and two within the property owner category out of that 10, who also dictates must be business owners. So essentially, seven out of the 15 would be business owners downtown. There are other requirements for sizes, so we have categories where businesses must be 5,000 square feet or smaller. So it accommodates for that as well. Yes, we would welcome participation from PBIA board members. Had some of those conversations already, I expect that when the petitions are submitted, we will also submit a slate of proposed candidates for the, the Board of Directors for the DID, which I imagine and I hope will include PBIA board members.
Yeah, how do we, Todd, how do we get to, you know, not to kind of the, the cart before the horse, but how do we get to yes, so that PBIA members that are interested, of course, not everyone is, can sort of slide right in and, and serve on DID?
Sure, so the, the DID Steering Committee will be having a conversation about a recommended slate of candidates. They've already had those conversations, as I think Councilmember Partially will attest to at the DID Steering Committee meetings, about including PBIA board members. So that's part of the process. We have a meeting on, a DID Steering Committee meeting on Thursday. We'll have an introductory conversation about that. But, you know, right now, front and center is that petition campaign and trying to get that 60%. We need that 60% in order to have a DID at all, including the Board of Directors.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Madron?
I too have seen this presentation quite a few times. My question is, at the Finance Committee meeting, when we made the recommendation to council to, to approve this action tonight, there was some discussion, and maybe this is a question for Jay over here. Stop looking at your watch. But there was, there was some discussion around, you know, when I look at the baseline level of services in the downtown ambassador program, there's actually, you know, $42,000 that comes from PBIA that pays for that program that we wouldn't have anymore. On top of that, by, if, if we move the ambassador program into CREW, you know, those are going to be employees that need a higher level of training, will get paid more. So I would say that this, this, what we're offering in this baseline is slightly higher than what we currently do. And there was some discussion in the Finance Committee about that. And so have you had a chance to relay that to Todd over here and, and, and just talk about that?
Yeah, I've relayed it to Rich in our one-on-one about this conversation, but I've not had a specific conversation with Todd about it. As Mike mentioned, we've got some more work to do on a management agreement, and part of that is going to be around kind of all these pieces of how we're assessed and what makes that up and whether or not there's opportunities for us. For example, I've talked, I have talked to Todd about administrative costs for us to move the money in and out. And some cities do charge the DID for that. And I think Todd shared with me that he's open to that conversation with us around that. But this new conversation happened to Finance Committee last week. I've not had a chance to have a really solid conversation with Mike and Todd about that and how this rolls into that. But certainly, as this process moves forward and we get into the management agreement, we'll, we'll circle back with all that. So just so everyone knows where, where Councilmember Drone is, the PBIA does pay for a portion of our ambassadors. And so when the, when the PBIA goes away, we lose that funding, which means the general fund has to pick up that portion for the ambassadors. And so that really is, when you think about the impact on the city, it's not just the assessment, it's the lost piece of funding. it's the lost piece of funding for our Ambassador Program that we now have to pick up. So we need to talk about that further.
Yeah, and I'd appreciate it if it was acknowledged in this baseline agreement, just to have that, you know, stated. You know, like I said, this baseline agreement, like we do provide the Ambassador Program. We want to continue doing that in this new form, but we won't have those resources from the PBIA to do it. So just, I'd like to see that acknowledged here.
Councilmember Payne.
Agreed. Councilmember Madron. Todd, good to see you. You and I have had a few one-on-one walkabouts around town. And we've had quite a few conversations around boundaries. But for those who may not be familiar with any of this process, I was wondering if you could explain how exactly the district boundaries were determined, who determined them, and any potential possibility of amending them in the future?
Thank you. So first, you know, I'll start with our bylaws at the Olympia Downtown Alliance. Broadly speaking, they extend southbound to Union, east to East Side, north to the Port Properties, and west to the Bridges. So really, we started the conversation there back in 2019, 2020. And when we put the Steering Committee together, started outreach to property owners in all those areas. Obviously, given the process and state mandate, we need property owners representing 60% of the total assessment assigned to petitions. So if we don't get that 60%, there is no Downtown Improvement District. So that influenced the decision as we had property owners, for example, southbound on Capitol Way toward Union, that indicated that they weren't interested in participating in the DID, closed the boundaries that direction. You will recall back in May, we were having the conversation about the southeast portion of downtown, a lot that state leased office property in that area. We got an answer back from that property owner that while they were supportive in 2019, 2020, I want to, you know, put words in their mouth, but given the struggles with bringing state employees back into the office, I think they felt uncomfortable with extending the boundaries during this process. So we shaved that portion off as well. 20 blocks came out of that. So we lost revenue there, but we also lost the demand for services. So the two kind of balanced each other out. So, you know, that's the process we went through to get there. I have received phone calls since we launched petition from property owners in the periphery of the existing boundary, wondering if they could get in. It's too late for the petition process that we've launched. We'd have to relaunch an entire petition process to get there. Having said that, on an annual basis, revised code of Washington says that we can come back and the council could approve expanded boundaries from there.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I really, really just want to thank the ODA for being a partner with us in trying to really change the look and the feel and just the general scene of the downtown. I asked you that question because I suspect that we're going to be able to amplify services and folks will probably see the benefit of that and will eventually probably want in. And so just kind of wanted to say that out loud so that there is a knowledge that there is an opportunity to eventually come in if they would like. I do just want to just stress the importance on the Downtown Ambassador issue that we have in terms of finances that Councilmember Madron just brought up. This council feels very strongly about having the Downtown Ambassador Program, and we appreciate your assistance and your partnership with us in that regard as well. But we do absolutely want to be sure that it is funded so that it could be maintained over time. And so I'm very much looking forward to conversations with you and with staff on how we're going to ensure that that happens. And thank you for the presentation tonight.
Councilmember Partially.
I just have two questions. One may be to staff. And that is, because reading the letter from PBIA, I agree with Councilmember Nguyen, there's some nuggets in here we should pay attention to. But one of the questions I had was their comments about the ambassadors. Are they aware of the plan going forward about being CREW? And just because they were very concerned about ongoing. Is PBIA aware of that?
Yes, we notified the PBIA Board earlier this week about the change, because we didn't want them to hear about it for the first time at a council meeting. So yeah, we did inform the board earlier.
Thank you. Appreciate that. My question is to Todd and maybe Legal. It sounds like there's a way to expand the borders and not at 10 years. Can you explain that?
Sure. So my understanding is council manic by council action, we can expand those boundaries on an annual basis, that you can reconsider that. It would seem to make sense to me that during the budget process that, you know, for the DID, which folds into your municipal budget process, that we could consider something like that. I will also say and expand on my answer to Councilmember Payne. I think there may be an opportunity in the interim for contracts for service for those on the periphery, if they're interested in those services. We need to understand and, you know, make sure we're providing services equitably to our stakeholders, our rate payers should the DID go through, but I think that opportunity may exist as well. I know right now, we work with OSPI on a contract for Downtown Guide Services, and I could see them being interested in continuing those services.
Thank you. I look forward to rolling up our sleeves on the next phase, because as you heard from council, there's going to be some conversation about management and how we pay for. I guess, are we going to call it CREW or Downtown CREW? Or what do we, they've got a new name?
We're still talking about that, so more to come.
And redcoats, maybe, huh?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah, just wanted to kind of, just circling back on Councilmember Partially's initial question on PBIA and their awareness of the direction of the ambassadors or the sort of forming direction of the ambassadors, as stated by the city manager. The name's not set yet and some other things. But is my understanding that we are actually going to have staff present to the PBIA at their upcoming early October meeting on the ambassadors, because they felt so strongly about maintaining the ambassadors, actually at one of their last meetings, that they crafted a work plan for 2024, knowing that the DID may very well pass and PBIA might not be there anymore. But they actually dedicated a portion of their funding to ambassadors as a symbol of how much they would like the ambassadors, how meaningful the ambassadors are and how much they would like the program to continue. So it's, so is my understanding that beyond just notifying them that we're having staff actually present to the PBIA and take their feedback in some way? Maybe we can have the city manager kind of clarify that?
Yes, Councilmember, this is Mike. Yes, we are scheduled to present to PBIA to the board at their October meeting. It'll be myself and Deputy Chief Shelby Parker that will be presenting and answering their questions on how the new team will roll out and we'll be getting some feedback from them.
And I just want to speak for a moment to express that I had real reservations in 2020, and it was mostly questions about whether we were privatizing public spaces. But I have been so impressed with the work over the last several years, particularly weathering the pandemic and with the successes of new businesses opening and parking full on weeknights downtown, that I am really enthusiastic about moving forward. And then I'll just, you know, be a thorn in your side about how we work private security and plazas and sidewalks and benches and maintain public spaces downtown. So.
We'll look forward to that.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Partially.
I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a petition in support of the proposal to form a Downtown Improvement District.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Nay. All right, we are signing on to the petition. Next up, we have Item 6B, which is a report, and that's an update on the One Community Strategic Plan. And Assistant City Manager Rich Hoy is going to lead us off. And give us just a moment to get the technology in order.
It worked. Thank you, Kelly. Good evening again, Mayor Protem Gilman and council members. Again, for the record, I'm Rich Hoy, Assistant City Manager, and really pleased to be here tonight to talk about the One Community Strategic Plan. I'm joined this evening by Darian Lightfoot, our Director of Housing and Homeless Response, as well as Stacy Ray, our Director of Strategic Planning and Performance. And just from the outset here, I just want to give them just a lot of gratitude and thanks for the work that they've done to get ready for this presentation tonight. That's a small part, but it's the work that they both are engaged in and their teams are engaged in day after day to implement the work of our One Community Plan. Stacy was involved in the development of the One Community Plan, so from its inception. And Darian and her team really picked up that work in advance, as you'll hear more about tonight. So my job is to kick off our discussion tonight. So what we're going to cover in our agenda, we're going to talk about a little bit of context on the One Community Plan, which is the community's response to the crisis related to housing and homelessness within our community. And we're going to talk about this strategic plan, which is really outlining our priorities, our role, and how we resource the implementation of that plan. We've had a lot of experience in the first three years, and we're laying out the next five years looking forward. So we'll talk about the elements of that. And Darian will come up and talk about really the, you know, the significant elements, the goals and strategies related to that. Stacy will wrap us up at the end with next steps and where we're going. So some context, the One Community Plan, as the council will recall, I'm going to take you back to 2018. We were dealing, at that time, we still are, dealing with a significant crisis in our community related to housing and homelessness. It had been, it had been growing. It reached a point where the council elected to declare an emergency and start, you know, significantly moving the city organization to the response to that crisis. That was back in July of 2018. And just to give you a sense of scale of what we were dealing with at that time, in the downtown, just really from the summer to the fall, the number of tents downtown grew from 75 up to about 300. And so it was a significant rapid growth at that time. And the council elected to launch this One Community Plan process back in March of 2019. And this was a community-led effort. So there was a community work group made up of 11 individuals, really a cross-section of the community, but with diverse backgrounds, experiences, lived experiences, professional experiences, to come together and really listen to the community about what the community felt we needed to do together collectively to respond to the crisis. They convened 20 different community conversations or a couple of online surveys, and over 1,200 community members engaged in this process. It was a very, very significant effort. In February of 2020, which is a noteworthy time for a number of reasons, as you'll recall, the council accepted a set of recommendations from the community work group. And that's been guiding our work ever since, in terms of the work around housing and homeless response. And really, the most significant theme that emerged from that is really that we need to balance both compassion and accountability in our response to this crisis. So that we need to recognize that people who are unhoused in our community are suffering, are struggling, are dealing with significant trauma, and we need to respond with compassion. Encampments, we also recognize, cause significant health, safety, environmental issues, and we need to respond to that as well. And so it's really about balancing compassion and accountability was the big focus. The plan was broken up into three main focus areas, a lot of different strategies and actions embedded in the plan. And as I mentioned, that's been really our guidepost, where we've been, what we've been working from ever since. We're now about three years in from the One Community Plan. We got through a global pandemic during that time, so that impacted how we were responding understandably. And it was really a pleasure for me to think and look back on the accomplishments that we've had since that time. And I just got to say, under Darian's leadership, the team that we've assembled to work on housing and homeless response is remarkable. And they're doing the work on the ground to respond to, like issues you heard earlier tonight in public comment related to homeless response, how it's impacting the community, but also how we're working to prevent homelessness in the first place. We're working on the need for additional housing, affordable housing, permanent supportive housing within our community, wide range of activities, renter protections, critical home repair to keep people in their homes. So a full array of services that we've been working on that really reflects what we heard in the One Community Plan. And we're way beyond any other jurisdiction in terms of, locally, in terms of what we've set up over that time. I'm really proud that over this time, other departments, really all departments across the city have embraced this as a citywide priority, as opposed to that's someone else's job to do, it's all of our jobs. That's a really big deal. We've had the RHC, the Regional Housing Council, expand their focus and role over that time. The Right-of-Way Partnership with Department of Commerce with the state, that's really infused a lot of resources, helped us house a lot of people who were camped along public right-of-ways, particularly along I-5. We've had real success with getting new shelters constructed, like Quinn Street Village, most recently the Franz Anderson Tiny Home Village, the new Maple Court Enhanced Shelter that's in Lacey is a huge boon for housing in our region. So that's been great to see happen. And also permanent supportive housing projects. We've had several projects that are under construction now. The Landing, which is the family support center project on the west side. Unity Commons, the Phase 2 is under construction now, with more projects like Franz Anderson and the Franklin Olympia Project coming right behind it. So there's a lot that's been happening. And we've also had success in addressing some very large encampments within our community. And I think it's important for us to continue to note this, is a really big deal. Since the One Community Plan has been adopted, we were able to address the Deschutes Encampment. We were able to address Henson Road. We were able to address Slater Kinney, Wheeler. This week, City Center. Next week, we'll start on Nickerson. And this isn't just, you know, removal of encampments. This is housing people who are unhoused and suffering within our community, connecting people to housing and critical services. So that's been a really big deal and success for us. We continue to have challenges. There are many more that I put on the slide, but the need for housing just continues to outpace the development. So we just need a whole lot more of all types of housing. We have some funding uncertainty with the work that's happening. We funded some of our responses through one-time dollars and grants to get things going. We're in a critical need, but we've got some funding uncertainty about how we're going to continue to fund these efforts looking out into the future. And also, support for staff wellness. The work engaged, particularly in homeless response, is really difficult work. The experiences that our staff have working with a population who's been through a lot of trauma, they see a lot of sadness and difficult situations, day after day after day, and it takes its toll. So we've been working on how do we support our staff, their safety and their wellness in this work. So the strategic plan, this does not replace the One Community Plan. This is really about defining our role. The One Community Plan has recommendations that apply to the city and efforts that we need to undertake, but there are recommendations in there that apply to other partners across the community. So this is more internally focused on clearly defining our role and prioritizing our response and our resources, looking out. and prioritizing our response and our resources, looking out over a five-year horizon. So I won't read all these bullets, but this is really what the, the strategic plan is intended to do. And, you know, that'll really be important for us in guiding our work moving forward from here. I want to thank the team that we've assembled across the city to help develop this, this strategic plan. They're all here tonight, so they all wanted to be here for this conversation. We've been learning a lot together. As I mentioned, this is not about just Darian and her team, and they're figuring out how to deal with this. This is all of us leaning in together. Police, fire, code enforcement, public works, finance, legal, all of us figuring out how do we support this work. And I just, I want to thank all of the, the members of the steering committee for the work that they're doing. It's really been a pleasure to work on it with them. So this last slide for me, I'll invite Darian up to talk more about what's in the strategic plan. These are the main elements in terms of clearly articulating our role, vision, mission, strategies and actions, partners, et cetera. And so we are partway through this work, so this is a briefing for you tonight. So we'll in particular, talk through a lot of the strategies and actions, and then we'll talk about the additional work that's still yet to come. And with that, I'll turn it to Darian.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, so I'm going to talk about all the content that we were able to get through over these past several months and just really set you up with our vision and what we're able to feel that is right, that we are already leading by, and that really what emulates what we want to move forward. So in the city of Olympia, homelessness is rare and brief, and housing is available and affordable. It's really hard to prevent homelessness, but if it does happen, because there are uncontrollables that the city can't really attend to, but when it does happen, it is rare and brief, and we're working to make affordable housing available to everyone. And our mission, we can respond to homelessness in a way that balances compassion and accountability. Rich just spoke on that was really core to the One Community Plan. I'm going to talk to you about how that is showing up in the strategies that we laid out, and so that Olympia is safe and healthy for everyone, and that's, that's really important. And through this work, we thought, what is our role? First legally, what can we do? And then after that, what do we want to do? What do we want the city's identity to be around housing and homeless response? And so our role, the, the first one we see here is first responder, and often that comes up for police or fire and first responder, but we want to expand that definition for first responder is homeless response, or it is code enforcement, or it is parking services. It's really that first touch, and then what staff does during that first touch. What do we do? How do we engage? And then how does that come about throughout the rest of these? So when we are that first responder, how are we connecting people to services? How are we leading with care and curiosity and creativity? And then when we are responding and we identify gaps, how do we be creative and find funding to address those gaps? And then just constant innovation, which is a piece that I really care about, and I'm going to, I'm going to highlight through, through the strategic plan. So our guiding principles is that we are human-centered. We hear this so much from the community, from our service providers and partners, is that we are seeing people suffering, and that we have a great role in order to address the sadness and suffering, and so we want to remain human-centered. Balance is really important, especially in our current role. We are innovators. We can't keep trying to marginally address this issue, thinking that we are going to make a change. We have to be bold and innovative, and I think that's, that's exactly what we're doing. We are a community that wants to come together and address this issue. I feel when I hear emails or phone calls of people feeling frustrated about our crisis, I really feel that there is sadness behind that. It's people, seeing people suffering is very sad. And so, you know, seeing that sadness in people and wanting to help them through it, I do see our community really wanting to lean in and help. And employee well-being, like Rich said, it's, it's a pretty intense vicarious trauma that people are experiencing. So how can we keep our really incredible staff and keep them doing a great job? And financial resiliency, standing of a project and it not being financially viable continuing, that's, that just, you know, re-traumatizes people, and it's not good for our system. So finding a way to be financially resilient is a high priority. Okay, so here are the four goals that really rose to the top, that I'm going to go into a little bit more. But provide a streamlined, rapid-response system to connect people to services and address urgent need. Just at the top, we need to see our system, know our system, and find gaps within our system. Expand the continuum of affordable housing and temporary shelter units to address and prevent homelessness. Having the continuum is homelessness prevention. Thinking that someone is going to exit an encampment and go into a market-rate apartment is just not realistic. So we need to have this continuum in order to prevent homelessness. Ensuring public health and safety standards are enforced by balancing compassion and accountability. Again, looking for that balance. And demonstrating leadership by promoting approaches that result in long-term sustainable solutions. So being leaders in our community. Okay, so the first one. Provide streamlined, rapid-response system to connect people to services and address urgent need. So connecting people to shelter and housing supportive services. We've really grown our relationships with our service providers, and we're seeing that just with our expansive programming and applications to our RFP, and just how robust our system has become. Leveraging community partners, our RHC relationship has really blossomed. We've gotten good feedback from Commerce that the Thurston County's right-of-way approach has become the standard, which is sometimes surprising, but I'll take the compliment. Increase access to local substance use disorder and mental health treatment facilities. This is really challenging. This is a lot of the feedback we get from the community of people are in crisis. What is the city doing about mental health and substance use disorders? And there's only so much we can do on a crisis this large. In April, Catholic Community Services and I applied for a grant to the Department of Justice in order to expand our Arrest and Jail Alternatives Program. And this was a two-part, in order to have additional training for staff. So we are trauma-informed. We are becoming resilient in this work, and we're able to really address retention. And this, this million-dollar grant was supposed to expand the program for over three years and really help this issue, and we learned this morning that we got the grant, which is all exciting. Buried the lead on that one, but really great. But that's what we can do, is we can be creative and see these funding options and try, and we can try. And this was a total hail mary, and the program manager and I were like, if we get this, we're going to jump in the sound. So pictures to come. Okay, so, and then 1.7, responding to housing and homelessness is a citywide priority in every department. And Rich really spoke to that. If you're looking to work at the city of Olympia, you have opted into public service. And opting into public service can look unique. Maybe you are technically proficient in one area, but you are still a public servant while you're here. And so seeing homelessness and housing as a top priority, regardless of your department, is, is really important, and that's how we're going to move the needle. Okay, and goal number two. Expand the continuum of affordable housing and temporary shelter options to, options to address and prevent homelessness. So this is a little bit of a, a intro to the land use folks, so this is coming on Thursday. But to address affordable housing in the full continuum, between the years of 2021 and 2023, we developed two-hundred-and-twenty-one units of low-income and supportive housing in those three years. Between the years of 2024 and 2027, we are projected to develop seven-hundred-and-fifty-six units of low-income housing. So in those three years, we are going to triple the numbers, and that is what we are seeing from the offset of the home fund. Our early investment is able to propel these projects forward, and it's coming to fruition. This bottleneck is really going to be impacted because of our early local investment. And we may not be seeing it now, but we will be seeing it over the years, and that is just us addressing this continuum of affordable housing. Pursue and leverage regional, state, and federal funding sources to support housing development. In June, you both talked, both saw, you all saw two public service, for public, no, 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 purchase and sale agreements. What is the PSA? Purchase and sale agreements for two properties. And both of those have gone to the local home fund. They have gone to the Housing Trust Fund. They are going to go to the, going to get their tax credits in this year. Because we did that leveraging of local land at the beginning of the summer, both projects are moving forward to leverage state and local funds. So we are, it is in action. We are doing these things. Work regionally to ensure diversity of temporary shelter housing and housing types are available throughout the county. Maple Court in Lacey, Tumwater Inn in Tumwater, we're seeing these larger projects throughout the region, not just in Olympia. Okay, goal number three. Ensure public health and safety standards are enforced by balancing compassion and accountability. I know we had public comment earlier that was talking about this, and we are well aware, we want to work to address encampments on public property and on private property. Those are two very different approaches. We know them, we are familiar with them, and both of them have their different intricacies. Over this past year, we've been able to close seven encampments on public property because we've been able to work with the state. It's been on the Department of Transportation's land, and we know legally how we can move those forward and connect people to housing. When it's on private property, it's a different set of procedures that we have to walk through, and sometimes it, there's more uncertainty. So knowing those, being able to work closely with code enforcement and other departments to do this responsibly is something that we know when you really want to prioritize. Goal number four. Demonstrate leadership by promoting approaches that result in long-term, sustainable funding solutions. We want to be able to have a housing and homeless response system that is still creative and going after grants and leverage, but also be physically responsible, and we know what our capacity is, to grow responsibly, to fill gaps in our community, and to be a model locally and regionally. I got a lot of phone calls from other cities throughout the state, being like, how were you able to push this through? What does this look like for you and your council? How are you able to gain community support? And I'm able to say that we are acting in a bold way. And that is something that is, is, it, it really impacts people who ask. We're trying to act boldly, and with that means bold action. So I really think that we need to continue to do that, and that is in the strategic plan. Four nine is really important. Develop qualitative and quantitative performance measures. In this last piece, pivot when necessary. This is a really new line of work. And if we're curious, and we ask a lot of good questions, but we understand this is best practice now, but what best practice looks like in a couple of years, we're able to pivot and do what's best for our community and listen and learn. And I think that's when we're going to see the most impact. Okay. So really to summarize our operational response, all of these pieces need to work in tandem. We will work to prevent homelessness. We understand housing affordability and rent prices, those are the two best predeterminants of homelessness. So working to prevent homelessness. Build a continuum of a local and regional housing types, so people, when they become housing unstable, they have other options to go. Provide ongoing emergency response and proactive encampment management. Knowing, having relationships with people in our established encampments really makes such a difference. Our coordinated entry system has really become so much more robust after this past year. We know it has had issues, but it has flourished really in this past year with deep community investment, and we're seeing a ton of outputs. And because we have such great relationships with people in encampments, we know folks, we know who are there, and then when they come to the top of the coordinated entry list, we can connect people really easily. So moving forward with those established relationships is really important. Once we are able to connect people to housing, removing the encampments. It is an impact on neighborhoods, health and safety, and it's not something we want to remain. So once people are connected to housing, we want to close the encampment, and for people to not live in encampments, we all want the same thing. We do not want people living in encampments. So working through our process and then working to prevent them. So all of these, depending on the stage, we need to be working through them simultaneously to, to see our community impact. Okay, that's what I have. I'm going to pass it on to Stacy.
Okay, thank you, Darian. So I'll wrap this up tonight. So my role, as Rich mentioned earlier, was as project manager. But really, it was to just kind of shepherd this group through this process. And what that meant was just helping facilitate conversation, challenging conversations, celebrations, and just spending time together, working through what we've learned, recognizing what we've learned, pulling out the expertise out of staff and translating that into some of the strategies that Darian highlighted for you tonight. So as Darian also previewed, for those of you on the Land Use and Environment Committee on Thursday, oops, I should forward my slide. There we go. She will be sharing an update along with metrics and data. So you got a little piece of that tonight. So we're going to provide some more to the Land Use Committee. As part of our commitment is being able to identify that data, those data sets, those metrics, to be able to track and demonstrate progress in what we're implementing with the strategic plan. Darren will also have a chance to kind of take a little bit of a deeper dive into some of those challenges, some of those pivots and adaptations that she mentioned, the effective approaches, and again, be able to talk more in-depth in terms of the innovations that their team has really led with. So after tonight's update, again, as Rich mentioned, we've got a little bit more work to do. So tonight is a briefing to kind of let you know where we're at in terms of developing the plan. But we'll still want to do some prioritization around the actions. Tonight, we shared strategies with you and a selection of strategies. So we've got some more refining to do around the strategies and then prioritization within the actions within those that lend themselves more specificity to those strategies. We'll also, again, kind of building off what you'll see at Land Use, developing those measures and indicators that will continue to inform our decision-making, our planning, and give us the ability to regularly assess and evaluate and share with the community and staff how we're doing. And we'll also be developing a funding plan that outlines, again, in alignment with our priorities, you know, how we best leverage our available resources to continue to be really strategic in fulfilling the role that we've identified as an organization. So, and then lastly, we can't forget our communications component. Part of this process really launched because a lot of staff were asking us, what is the, what is the approach? What, as a city, are we working towards, and, and what does success look like? And so really, developing the internal communications to continue to bring all staff along, because as Darian talked about, this is really a citywide priority with staff from nearly every department touching response. And so we want to make sure that they're engaged and understand what the path forward is. And then simultaneously, again, communicating, communicating out with our community about what our role is, our mission, and really where we're prioritizing our resources and our, and our focus going forward. So before I move to questions and discussion, like Rich, I also just want to take an opportunity to acknowledge the team. So this, these were challenging conversations, and this team brought everything that we've heard from staff. So everything that staff had been talking with us about, their concerns, their experiences. They brought to the table the stories of being in the field and individually building relationships with individuals experiencing homelessness, and, and all the perspectives that we hear from community members, right? And all the planning that we've done to date. So I just want to commend the team for having challenging conversations and for coming into this process with curiosity and just a, a commitment to a citywide approach that again balances that compassion and accountability component. So, okay, now I'll just turn it over to discussion and questions. Thank you.
So how about we'll just start with Councilmember Madrona, we'll work down the row, and hopefully we can get the screen back up with Councilmember Nguyen. Go ahead.
I too would like to commend the team working on this, and it's really great to see this embedded into our culture as a city government. So thank you all for the work that you put into this. It really, it really shows how passionate you are. And Darian, if you are down for a polar bear plunge, I so am. I'm, I will jump in the sound with you. We'll celebrate that, that grant. I do have a couple of questions, which are probably going to fall to you. I'm curious around prevention of new encampments. Because when we do address encampments and we offer people housing, not everybody accepts it. And then they have to move on to somewhere else, and then there's the risk that a new encampment forms somewhere. Could, so could you speak to that a little bit, like the, what, what we do to prevent new encampments from forming or reforming?
Yeah, absolutely. So just the, to adjust the piece of people not accepting the housing, I think that that can often be a misnomer, that so many people do not accept the housing that is offered, and that's just really not the case. We saw that at Ensign Road, we saw that at Slater Kinney overwhelmingly. A vast majority of people offer A vast majority of people offered housing, accepted housing. And when you had people coming to say, I heard housing is being available, please include me on the list. Oftentimes when people don't accept housing, it's because of the limited options. There's a congregate shelter and people have severe PTSD. There's a lot of people surviving domestic violence that are homeless and potentially their perpetrator or something that triggers that is also in that same place. So just want to address that it is not this case where we're seeing that and needing to address it. But yes, we do see oftentimes, sometimes people not accepting housing, but it's more often than not because of our options are limited or because other trauma that is with folks. In terms of preventing encampments, we made note in here to preventing established encampments. It is really, really challenging to be stretched throughout the city and being able to address every single tent that pops up the first time it stands up. So it is getting out there often and early to try to engage people with services to not let an encampment get established. Because the longer an encampment is there, the more challenging it is for it to be, to connect people to housing and for that encampment to be removed. So it's connection often and early, having a variety of housing choices and really making sure that everyone is on the coordinated entry list. Because of how coordinated entry is set up right now, it is not set up with you have the highest vulnerability, you go to the first available unit. It's not like that any longer. It's here's the list of people that have the highest vulnerability score. And here's all of our available options for housing and where do these folks fit best? It is a fit-based process and we're just seeing a ton more success. So I think those two pair together are really gonna, it's really gonna help.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There's also a component to what you presented around the prevention of homelessness. And we also have our Housing Action Plan where we have tenant protections. I don't know if that is directly in the one community plan or not. But that's something else that we've been working on and are working on this year. So can you just speak to the connection of the prevention of homelessness and the tenant protections that we have passed and are looking at passing this year?
Yes, absolutely. Commerce release data that they all, that they received from HUD, that is now the standard that says with every $100 rent increase, it is correlated to a 15% increase in homelessness. Rent stability, renter protections is homelessness prevention. And so all of our rental protections work is correlated directly to homelessness prevention told to us by HUD, told to us by the state. So anything that we're able to do to protect renters, which is 54% of our population, the vast, our largest majority of people being housing cost burden and impacted by stability and rent prices, that is homelessness prevention. So yes, any work around renter protections is homelessness prevention.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Payne.
Hi, Darian. Thank you for that enthusiastic presentation. It kept me like wide awake because it's getting late. Councilmember Madrona actually touched on what I was gonna ask you about, well, sort of around preventing new encampments. And you sort of responded to it a little bit in your, in your answer because my, my question was about scattered homelessness. And sort of what is the plan for that? Because I do appreciate the emphasis on encampments. But we do know that there is a segment of folks that don't feel comfortable necessarily residing in a shelter and they don't want to be in an encampment. And they just don't want to be with other people for whatever reason they may have. And rather past incidents or trauma or something of that nature. And so what are we doing? You mentioned coordinated entry and some of those things, but I do think that there is sort of a sentiment that when we break up an encampment, we do see more of those sort of like individual folks out and about around the city. And so I'd just like to hear a little bit more about how we're walking and chewing gum at the same time.
Yeah. That, those are approaches that just are a bit more case by case. When it's an individual basis like that, we have to work the fringes and try to connect people to resources that they need in order to thrive. If someone isn't going to go into an encampment or go into a shelter that we're trying to connect them to, there's only so much, so many times that we can connect with someone to try to offer them resources. So we would couple our approach with CREW or potentially OPD, really lean on our service providers who have greater relationships with people and hopefully be able to make an impact. But one-off encampments where someone maybe sleeps somewhere some night and they get up and move in somewhere another night, that's hard for us to enact our sitlight ordinances or any of our live aboard ordinances. That's more of a transient ordinance approach and it, that just takes, it's more time intensive and just takes more relationship building.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And along with that, I'm just, I have a question about access. Because I think that there may be a concern about whether or not, you know, folks are eligible to begin with for the housing that we're providing. And so I was also wondering if you could speak to what that looks like in terms of low barrier. And just to put folks at ease around this misnomer that not only are people not choosing housing, but that they're not eligible for it because they may have some sort of criminal conviction or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Our provider community is incredibly knowledgeable and passionate and is advocates of a low barrier approach, of a housing-first approach, because that is best practice. That's what comes out of our commerce guidelines that a housing-first approach is where you see success. And so depending on the service provider, they have standards and community guidelines and how they engage with residents. But a vast majority of our shelters in the community are low barrier. Or a better way to put it is, it's not, you're not going to be turned away because of, of things in your past if you're looking for housing. So yeah, addressing that is, there are places for folks, not necessarily ample beds currently, but programs are offered to a vast majority of our unhoused residents.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the entire steering committee. I appreciate everyone's work on this. And it's very clear to the community that we've prioritized this. I mean, we think about 2018 till now and look at what we're doing. It's just incredible. So thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Nguyen.
Oh, wow. One, just I'm looking backwards from being a newly elected city council member in 2018 and the whirlwind. And Stacy, you're amazing. And Amy, going through that process, I just can't help but wonder if you have done a presentation to that previous work group because they worked their hearts out. And I remember the first time I ever saw them at a work session, they were sitting way far away from each other. And when they came and presented in February 2020, they were a cohesive group, intermixed and passionate about this plan. I think they'd have fun seeing all the work that Darian and her crew and we have done in the interim to achieve this plan. I think it would be really fun, you know, and we get their feedback too, because they're our voice.
Yeah. I'll say it, it was fun. So we did bring them back together and they really appreciated the time to reconnect. We met with them twice to share, essentially a very long inventory of all the things we had done directly in relationship to their recommendations. And also got input on what they felt like would be the highest priorities and areas for the city focus going forward. And so that was integrated into this work.
Thank you, Stacy, for doing that. I can say, standing at Unity Commons ribbon cutting, we all had tears in our eyes to see the, you know, that we had actually gotten the continuum going. And Darian, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to dance back here, but I'm sure the halls of City Hall, when you guys found out about the million dollar grant, were kind of ringing.
It was so fun. It was so fun. I ran upstairs and so many people celebrated with me. It was really dear and communal and kind and warm. Yeah, thank you, Debbie specifically.
Yes, this, it is fantastic. And I, I am so proud of our city. I am so proud of everybody. I can tell you, my, my family's in Portland, Oregon, and they were telling me about this really cool thing they were doing. I'm like, we've done that, been there. And she's like, what? Yeah, I'm sorry, Portland's behind Olympia. That was fun to say. Just thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah. Hey, everyone. I really enjoyed the presentation and I echo all of the good sentiments of the one being done and not only for the strategic plan, also just overall over the years and how many wins that we do have because of this work. I do have a question as far as sort of tracking and then getting the information out. So you know, we have moments like this where we're just newly been briefed and hopefully many community members are tuning in. And then down the line, we have public comments like the one that we received tonight. So I'm curious about, will our website be updated with refreshed information on this topic? And then also in, you know, is there, I mean, I think ultimately it would be so lovely if there was a dashboard that told us like, here are the goals. And then here are, here's our timeline of like accomplishing them. Here are all the things that we did do. Here's the ones that are on the horizon that we or community members are able to, to tap into and look at. And when we start wondering again and not seeing, not remembering all of this information and just seeing what's before us, which is people that are living outside and possibly getting, having rubs with other residents in our community as well. So interested in how we're sharing the information and how we track this.
Yes, to speak to a couple of things in the short term. We are well aware that we want to continue to communicate our message. This is really important. And we're seeing a lot of good feedback about what the city is doing. I received my first positive email the other day. I printed it, which was great. And, but we have a member of our communications team that comes to our staff meeting every Tuesday. And we, at the end of our staff meeting, we say, okay, what came out of our report outs today that we want to put out? What in our housing world, our regulations, our homeless response feels that rose to the top that we want to share with the community? And that's becoming best practice and, and what we're doing in our team to make sure that we're sharing updates with the community. We also had all of communication staff come to our staff meeting this morning to talk about how we can better engage, how can we tell our story, how can we support you, how can y'all support us? So we know that this is a gap and something that we really want to improve on. And are trying to strategize to spread things out. So it's not just like encampment removal, encampment removal. You know, it's more of the whole picture and story to see how they connect and opportunities for the community to engage and say, oh, that's in my neighborhood or I could connect with an organization that way. So we are really strategically trying to set things up and I think that we're making some momentum. And what Stacy said in developing the plan, develop an internal and external communication plan. So something more robust is definitely coming, but in the interim, we're just trying to put more information out there. Also, the Regional Housing Council, we'll see on Wednesday, just proposed their communication strategy. So not only are we trying to put more information out there, but the Regional Housing Council is trying to do so as well. So we can boost each other's posts or such and that double dip. So more is coming, all that to say.
I really appreciate that. Just quickly kind of following up to that. I really, really enjoyed the blog post that you had, Darian. Not, not too long ago, maybe a couple of months ago at most, about all of the different efforts of housing and homelessness. And as much as we are sort of, I would only, I'm not a communication professional. So I would only imagine that we would try to connect, get the communication out in different ways. And also I think it's so important to have it all also in one place too. So when we go to, you know, City of Olympia under, and then look into your housing and homelessness, so we can find all of that information. So for what it's worth. Thank you.
So Member Payne.
Yeah, I actually do have another question about the, the unfunding certainty that was mentioned earlier in the presentation. What, what do you anticipate as potential sources of revenue to continue to address this? Obviously, the state made a huge investment and we would like to see them keep doing that. But the other thing that I'm thinking about is, is we're looking at bringing on a federal lobbyist. And I'm actually wondering, you know, obviously the federal government could probably be playing a bigger role here. But I want to hear from you about what you know about that and, and how we could potentially use that role to really try to help us aggressively tackle this regionally. Because Congress likes regional impact.
Yes, so addressing established encampments and working to close encampments and connect people to housing is really addresses our financial instability. When there's a large clean, when the tipping fees or hygiene services really expand, that impacts our financial instability. So closing those seven encampments has been in direct correlation with our improved budget. And so as we move those services and direct them towards tiny home villages or services that are predictable, we're able to really stabilize and then take that success and put it in a grant application and ask for funding. Funding a tiny home village is much more pretty than funding Honey Bucket, you know? So we're trying to position ourselves to be able to lever, leverage larger grant opportunities. And that is a way we're trying to do it. And then saying that this is a temporary site. So making our land book banking portfolio more robust does that. We say this is a temporary site. We will operate it for this finite amount of time. And then it becomes permanent housing. We land bank it, it gets developed. It is no longer a part of our budget. So it is this urgent response, temporary response, permanent housing, no longer in our budget. And that's kind of where we're seeing that continuum flow. So right now it's that stabilizing piece. And then we will hopefully progress into not funding ongoing services. It is housing or that's all being circulated through the countywide home fund. In terms of state and federal funding, yeah, absolutely. There's a ton of money coming through the feds right now. We're working on a grant called Pro Housing, Pathways to Responding to Obstacles to Housing. And with that comes a lot of administrative support. And we want to build that in to say that we can respond to this, but we need administrative help. And there's a emphasis placed on cities that are already doing this work. So there's a large narrative at the front that says, what are you already doing to address housing homelessness? And if you cannot answer these questions, you will not get a bulk of the points. So we already have a leg up in these federal grants because we're doing so much. So we're able to plug that in and keep things going. So yeah, we are seeing a lot of funds come through the federal government and we're working on that.
Great. Thank you.
Are we, are we good on this topic for this evening, council colleagues? Well, I hope, oh, I'm sorry, City Manager Bernie, please weigh in.
Thank you. I appreciate an opportunity here right at the end. I want to do a few things. One is I want to recognize, and I know that's been done a lot tonight, but I want to flashback to a conversation that I had in my office a couple of years ago with Darian. And when we knew this money was coming out from the state and I said, Darian, I want you to go get every bit of that money as you possibly can and put it to work here in Thurston County, Olympia area. And when you look at the money that has flowed in through commerce, it's because we had our act together. It's because we found a way to come together regionally. And it's because of some fierce advocacy from Darian and her team to go get that money. And so I just want to recognize them and Darian in particular for that. Because I issued you a challenge and challenge accepted, right? So, so thank you for that. And I mentioned being fierce advocates. And the other thing that I've talked to Darian and Rich about is being fierce in our advocacy to work regionally and define different solutions. And we're doing that. And I think you're hearing that and you're seeing that tonight. To the community at large, there's a lot for us to celebrate, but we are not declaring victory. We have a lot of work left to do. As you've just heard here tonight from folks that are here tonight with concerns around encampments and Percival Canyon and others. We've got a lot more work ahead of us. But I hope what the, what the community will see when they look at this work so far is they'll see that we are engaged in this and we're actively engaged in this and we're making progress. Again, we've got a lot more work to do, but we have a lot to be proud of in terms of where we are right now. And then I have a request. We've talked a lot tonight about gaps in our systems. And at some point in time, we're gonna house everybody that can be housed except for those that have needs that are beyond permanent supportive housing. We, we still do not have adequate mental health and healthcare facilities for those that are chronically mentally ill. We do not have long-term supportive We do not have long-term supportive drug rehab drug rehabilitation inpatient. We have some outpatient on its way, but we don't have any really good inpatient services. And no matter how much money the state provides, they they can't, that's not work the cities can do. That is work that the state and federal government has has to do and that is the next gap that we'll have to fill. And so I hope that that work will start now. Uh, because when you see how long it's taken us to get here, that work has got to start now. Because we're going to be there at some point in time and the matter is urgent. So I know this will be a top of our state and federal agendas. Again, this year, but I just want to continue to put put that message out as well um as we wrap up here tonight.
Great. Well, thank you to the entire steering committee for coming out tonight. And I hope you felt and heard our our excitement and our kudos and our pride. And um in the citywide effort that's going on. Thank you. We're going to keep Stacy Ray up here. And we're going to invite our Director of Strategic Planning and Performance to brief us on the Comprehensive Plan Focus Areas.
Okay. Okay, there we go. All right, I I'm like the. I'm like the palate cleanser. You guys, you guys, I was gonna ask me then budget. So here we go. And I'll try to stay brief here, but. So I'm gonna, for the record, I'm Stacy Ray, Director of Strategic Planning and Performance. So. We have a comprehensive plan that really lays out the community's long-term vision and goals. It looks out 20 years in the future. In 2014, we um. Uh, completed a major update of the comp plan, one of our periodic updates with broad input and participation from the community. At that time, we also um identified the first focus areas and uh. And 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 I worked on those. So there, I've been here a while. Um, but so we identified our first focus areas and the purpose was to really be able to summarize our comprehensive plan. And have a framework by which to share with the community how we were doing in achieving what was in that plan. How were we doing on those goals and policies? Um, it was also a framework to help guide our planning in between our periodic updates, our uh policymaking and um decision-making. So nearly a decade later, um aside from some slight changes, our focus areas have largely remained unchanged until now. So um for my agenda item tonight, I'm going to share uh the newly completed update to the comp plan focus areas. So uh first we'll just talk about why they're valuable, why they matter. Um, I'm going to share a high-level snapshot of our process. And um the relationship to the comp plan update that's underway. I'll share a brief overview of the updated focus areas and then we'll wrap up with any questions or discussion. So there's a lot of research right now on trust in government. Um, and really what the research is telling us is that there are four significant signals that can help improve. Residents' trust in their local government. One is humanity. So just demonstrating that we genuinely care for our community members' experiences and their well-being. The other is transparency. We share uh openly information, motives, decision-making in a way that people can understand. The other is capability. We create really good programs and services that meet the needs of our community. And reliability, we're consistent, we deliver high-quality programs and services. So knowing this, there's also research that says there are demonstrated ways to strengthen trust in local government. One is championing a vision for the future and having shared goals with community. The other is demonstrating progress, tangible felt progress. And the other is providing trustworthy information that's clear and consistent. So our focus areas are valuable because they help us do just that. We're building trust in government by keeping our community's vision front and center. Um, we are reflecting back to our community members what they have told us is important to them, what we should be working on. We use our focus areas to connect through our budget process and our annual work plan. To show in a tangible way how we're applying our resources to their priorities. And um and right now we're developing ways through metrics and data and progress reports to be able to show progress. So over the past 12 months, another cross-depart- cross-departmental staff team that I've been working with. Um, have been updating the focus areas. So again, after, you know, using these for, you know, some nearly 10 years. Um, we really had identified a need to update the language. Part of that was to just include kind of the new and emerging things that weren't there before. Um, and part of it was just to overall improve the clarity and the usability. The usability for staff to see themselves in the work and to be able to use these as a communication tool and a framework for our planning. So um I am working very closely with Joyce Phillips and Community Planning and Development, who's leading our Comprehensive Plan Update, which is like uh Comp Plan 2045. So um I just want to make sure to make that connection that. The public input we've received to date is in alignment with what you'll see here in terms of the updated focus areas. And these focus areas will be included in that Comprehensive Plan Update. Because really the intent is we go through our update. And we can continue to use our focus areas as a way to report on our progress and talk about what we're doing in terms of implementing that comp plan. So we've got six updated focus areas. And what you'll see um reflected in these updates are several uh significant changes. So and you also have a handout in front of you tonight as well that has them um has them on there. So um we have removed a focus area for downtown and a focus area that had been for neighborhoods. We have um added organizational excellence and well-planned city. As focus areas. We've included these succinct narrative statements so that at a glance, someone can tell what is this focus area about. Um, and we've incorporated some topics throughout the focus areas that um had been addressed very little or not at all. Um, and we've updated language to really reflect the staff uh expertise. And what we've learned through all the planning and engagement efforts we've undergone since we first developed these focus areas. So um I I'm not going to read all these for you, so just like rest assured, but um. I do briefly want to introduce them. So first we have public safety. Ensure all Olympians feel safe and receive reliable compassionate care. We have community livability, enrich quality of life and foster belonging for all who live, work, or spend time in Olympia. We have environmental stewardship, preserve and enhance Olympia's natural resources. Of economy, promote a thriving and diversified economy with pathways to prosperity for everyone. We have organizational excellence, deliver exceptional services and programs that are responsive to the needs of the community. And then lastly, we have well-planned city, plan for, construct, and maintain a built environment that ensures the well-being of current and future generations. So my my intent tonight was to, um, this is celebratory, supposed to introduce these focus areas to you. Uh, talk a little about the process we went through to get here and then um open it up for any discussion or questions.
Comments, question? We'll have Councilmember Payne kick it off and we'll go to you, Madron, next.
Hi Stacy.
Hi.
Good to see you, by the way. It's it's uh weird to see you and not be talking about reimagining, I have to say.
Yeah, so yeah, public safety. So wait, shape for four? Yeah, that comes later.
Yeah. Um, I I just, first of all, these focus areas are great, but I was just wondering actually about. Um, in in the comp plan, like our relationships to other other governments. So um I remember, I believe it was at our. Mid-year retreat, we had talked about the importance of making sure that the Squawson Island Tribe was involved in our in our comprehensive plan. Um, update as well. Um. You know, and I'm thinking also about the Port of Olympia, you know, they have their own vision and um. You know, in terms of us sort of being, while we might have our differences, I think it's important in terms of uh. Uh, a shared vision between of us um for the city. And so um. Just wondering about that and also just wanted to emphasize um that I think that's critically important that that um. That we check in and I know they're having some uh transitions uh right now. Um, but um this is a a 20-year update and so we should be uh engaging with them as well.
Yeah, I I wholeheartedly agree and I'm um. Do you have any, Leonard, would you like to add anything? So so community planning and development is taking the lead in our Comprehensive Plan Update right now. So I'm just going to offer. A a moment for Leonard to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks uh for that question, Councilmember Payne. Uh, we have, as you all know, uh originated a letter to the. Squawson Tribe early on, inviting them to participate and be uh uh both consulting partners and um. In in the Comprehensive Plan and in any Conference of Planning efforts they're doing. Uh, and uh we have not had an official response on that, but at the staff level, we certainly had conversations. I've also engaged uh with the Department of Commerce has now hired a tribal liaison. Uh, who helps with tribal relations around Conference of Planning for the state. It's a new position and uh has elicited their help as well. Uh, in terms of the port, yes, there's been a little bit of a transition there, actually quite a bit of transition there. And and so we've, again, we've had some conversations. Both these entities and all of our partnering local government entities in the region or that that are affected around the City of Olympia. Are on all of our mailing lists and notice lists and every and they should be well aware of what we're doing with the Conference of Plan. But I I agree, we should make some extra efforts for those entities that you mentioned and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Leonard. And thank you, Stacy.
Well, and to provide a little bit more of an answer uh to your question, our tribal relations work group, which is um myself, the mayor and Councilmember Huen and. Jay Bernie, uh last time we met with um Chris Peters and Ray Peters um with the Squawson Island Tribe, what we talked about doing. A joint council to council meeting sometime early in 2024. Um, and they uh will look at the chapters for our comprehensive plan as to which ones they are interested in hearing about. And then our staff can present to them, you know, where we're at and are planning with them and solicit their their feedback and consult with them on, you know, what it is they would like to see in those parts of it. So there's there's a little bit more. For you, uh, more coming on that. Um, I have a question. Um, one thing I noticed in our previous focus areas um under I under community living, I believe. It said, you know, uh that people have access to food and shelter. Um, and I see that foods dropped off of here and it makes me feel a little sad. Uh, you know, we talk about. Affordable housing, we talk about clean water, but food is a very basic need in our community. Um, and we have goals in our comprehensive plan around access to food that we're making progress on. In 2017, council passed a resolution around access to community gardens. And so I would like to see us keep. That in here. Um, you know, it could be as simple as saying residents have access to food and affordable housing. Affordable food and affordable housing, actually. Um, but I just think that that's so important for the health of our community to. Um, have access to nutritious food, to have the uh the food sovereignty that comes with being able to grow your own food. Um, and I wouldn't want to lose that.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Partially.
Um, I have one comment and a question. Um. It sort of goes with what um I'm hearing my councilmates say also. I don't know with the RCWs and the planning um requirements, if there's any way to. Discuss the circular economy, the intersectionality of all this, like our Olympia Strong pointed out food being incredibly important. So that links to economy as well as jobs and homelessness and affordable housing, but. Our density in our town is also going to improve our uh greenhouse uh gas as um a drug mitigation and adaptation. So is there any way in the introduction to indicate to our community that these may look like silos, but they really aren't?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. We have, we we have also had that conversation internally as staff because. Um, in going through the exercise of saying, oh, where does my thing that I do fit? And it's like, well, there's so much cross-section, you know, intersectionality between topics and. Um, without being able to weave everything throughout all six focus areas, what we really wanted to do is think about these in terms of. If you're a community member, where might you find the thing that you're interested in? So we know in terms of when we're planning around these and talking about them and storytelling with. Data that there are a lot of intersections and they're going to be interrelated. Um, but we also wanted to think in terms of if they're buckets to help someone navigate to the thing they're interested in, where might it fit? Um, but I appreciate the the um suggestion of just framing this in terms of. The, yeah, I guess the intersectionality of these topics and we can definitely look at doing that.
Um, my question, and then I'll end with a statement after that, but my my question is. You said you removed two sections was is simply because either they're not applicable, they're they're covered better by these new focus groups or. We're actually have made significant headway.
No, it's more in terms of um looking at the 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 organizational structure and kind of where to again be able to help someone navigate to the thing that they're interested in. So downtown and neighborhoods are both geographic areas. And at the time, there was um, it made sense because there's such an emphasis on downtown and not that there's not one anymore, but. We felt like really that can be addressed downtown itself can be addressed in many different ways through these areas as opposed to. Trying to fit certain things under a geographic heading, if that makes sense.
Totally, thank you. Um, I'll just end with the statement and um I know I'm not. Said this, well, I've said it maybe 100 times in the years. I would love to see the day where we align our budget to our comp plan. Debbie's laughing because she's 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 like, it's a dream. Because then it allows also the community to be able to go, um, what are we doing with affordable housing and and just be able to have that interactive budget. To comp plan. One day that'd be a beautiful thing.
Yeah, it'd be a beautiful thing. And you know, and you know, as council members, we've started to talk about what we're doing in terms of these focus areas, really, to start to talk about how we're implementing priorities through the annual work plan. And so I think we're taking our 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 iterative steps to be able to talk to community bound priorities. Yeah.
Councilmember Huen.
Yeah, thanks so much, Stacy. Um, really uh really exciting. I think we probably could have talked about any of the areas a little longer even um. Not a dig by any means. Uh, but just really excited to see the work and the progress on this. I'm curious about uh any pinch points in the process, any areas where um it was tough to, maybe you got some trends. Um, on uh on certain areas, but uh it was tough to kind of. Uh, figure out how to how to word it or how to how to incorporate it. Were are there things that um you wish could have made it and and didn't make it this go around? Um. Yeah, I was kind of interested in that sort of uh peeling behind the curtain or was everything just perfectly smooth? I don't know.
Yes, perfectly smooth. Yes. No, um, no, I think there were, um. You know, one of the things I'll highlight is that the we're particularly proud of the organizational excellence piece of this because one of the struggles that we had was was um. Some staff that are really the backbone of the city kind of seeing themselves represented in the work. Um, and so really that the. Have we found that a lot of staff appreciate the organizational excellence piece that was added to this? Um. I think in terms of, we we did struggle with, and I'll come back to um Councilmember Partially's comment about. Intersectionality. We we did kind of go around a bit about where cer- I guess I can look over here. Um, around where certain things belong, you know, in what in what focus area. Um, one of the areas, though, where we did feel strongly to weave it throughout the six focus areas is is equity and belonging. So that is one area where you see it's touched upon. Um, and also. Um, and also climate, we did land on um, addressing climate in a couple of different focus areas. So I, but um, in terms of um, tension, I think we feel pretty proud of where we've landed um, in being representative of much of our community's vision and kind of where we are today and where we're moving towards. So.
And just if I may just say, so I I just, I want to say that I I really appreciate the framework and especially those trust and belonging efforts that I see both in the community livability and the organizational excellence. And it it made me reflect when we had our our training with Parfe Basale and he was talking about co-creating equitable equitable community. It it made me um, think about, I've I've been excited learning about models of co-governance, other kinds of not IAPP to um, consultation of the community and decision-making. And I, I I think that these new buckets make room for whatever sort of co-governance evolves as the next way to consult the community. So it just makes me super excited. Yeah.
Thank you. I love that connection.
Go ahead, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, um, Councilmember Huen, I appreciate that question because I was actually in your response, Stacy, because I was thinking about equity and I actually wanted to say I appreciate that I don't see equity and belonging here as a separate focus area. Um, you know, achieving that is um, very different in each of these focus areas. And so I think there's a shared understanding that uh, it's woven throughout our comp plan. And so um, I appreciate seeing, not seeing that here.
Are we ready to thank Stacy? Everybody's okay? Yes. Stacy, thank you and and thank the entire interdisciplinary team that consulted to, this is a great, you're right, it's a great framework that really feeds our work on um, on the work plan for the year. Now, I'm going to propose it's it's eight ten now and we have at least an hour on this budget run. I'm going to propose a brief recess, seven inning stretch, if you will. So about three minutes, we'll let you set this up. We'll be back in three minutes. It's eight twelve now. We'll start up at eight fifteen. Is that us?
Yep.
Three minutes goes by so quickly. Let's reconvene. All right, we are back in session and we're welcoming City Manager Jay Burney to introduce our preliminary operating budget conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, again, Jay Burney, City Manager. Now that your palate is cleansed for the evening, we are gonna, uh, Aaron and Joan and I are here to kick off the council budget season by sharing an overview of where we are in terms of balancing. Tonight, we're going to be pretty much mainly general fund focused. As you know, there's a lot of components to our budget uh, beyond the general fund. We still have to talk about utility rates. We got to talk about fees, uh, uh, capital facilities, project funding. All those topics will come to you and we'll talk about a calendar here at the end and kind of how those will shape up. But tonight's focuses really are where we are on a preliminary basis with the general fund. As I shared with you earlier this year, the two thousand twenty-four budget is going to be more difficult to balance as compared to the budgets for the last few years. We have been responding and adding resources to meet community expectations and priorities. However, as Aaron shared with council last week and will again tonight, our revenues are not keeping pace with our needed priorities. We began this process, I began this process meeting with department directors uh, in August and the budget review team has been hard at work trimming our deficit, which we'll talk about in a moment. We've had to make some hard choices along the way and we've got some more hard choices still to make and I'll, I'll need some input from all of you tonight in terms of some of how we get there from, from where we are now to where we need to be. Um, you also see that as we talk tonight, that some of the items that Aaron and I have been talking with you about over the years um, about how we make our budget more sustainable and more transparent. Uh, we're moving in that direction, but there's, again, um, our revenue shortfall is really making some of those things harder to do um, and comes at where we are. So we met with the finance committee last week to have uh, this preliminary discussion and we received some good feedback from the finance committee. So um, that will be reflected in what you see tonight. We've tried to take into account what we heard from the finance committee and kind of change this presentation up to address some of their uh, preliminary input. In terms of our agenda for tonight, um, Aaron will come up next. We'll talk a little about budget process, our assumptions. I will come back and talk about um, our PPI cycle and our priorities and uh, Councilmember Partially, you'll see that our parties are linked to our comprehensive plan. You'll see that reflected in this presentation um, here tonight. Um, we're going to talk about the things that were um, are not funded in this budget. We've had to make some hard choices and I want to really clearly articulate to what those are. Um, there, there are some things that I am proposing to add to the budget. We'll cover those things tonight as well. Um, and then I'm going to outline for you, and I really appreciate the work that Joan did on this. I'm going to outline for you a pathway to a balanced budget that starts tonight. Um, and then uh, we'll talk about future follow-up and budget calendar and meeting schedule. Um, and I just want to highlight that where we are tonight is a snapshot in time of where we are tonight. And with your input and discussion tonight and moving forward and subsequent conversations with the finance committee, we'll continue to shape this budget. So certainly where we are tonight is probably not where we're going to end up when we're finally done. So I just want to leave you with that also. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to get us going.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, Aaron B. Miller with the Finance Department. Um, so as Jay mentioned earlier, uh, balancing the two thousand twenty-four budget continues and we use that word purposefully here. It continues because we're not quite all the way there yet. And um, as we go through this, uh, Jay will talk more about where we are. As in every years, the needs uh, far outpaced our resource uh, and and our ability to fund those needs. Uh, departments uh, submitted just under ten million dollars in enhancement requests. Uh, over half of that are ongoing. Um, and so it takes a lot of resources to to meet that need. There is some limited expansion um, in the budget. Um, but overall, as Jay mentioned again, we continue to uh, uh, struggle on making inroads toward a sustainable budget. Now, some of the um, items that Jay discusses and um, how we're going to cover some of the revenue shortfalls that's planned. It, there's a, there's a thought process behind it and um, he'll go through that. Uh, this was an uh, idea that um, Councilmember and Finance Committee Member Cooper uh, suggested we put on here. Council, remember this from, I think a week ago tonight, when we talked about our ten-year forecast. Just a reminder about where we are, the red line or the orange line uh, being expense and the blue line being revenue. Every year, expense increases at a rate that exceeds our resources and we have to close that gap. In two thousand twenty-four, on this presentation, we're showing that gap being closed. Um, but if you see in two thousand twenty-five, juts out to six point five million immediately. That's because we're using uh, fund balance this year to uh, cover ongoing operations. And so when we remove that in two thousand twenty-five, we get that big number to start there. And so just a reminder of where we are and what our ten-year forecast looks like. Uh, we want to spend just a little bit of time on this. Um, this is our general fund revenues. How we budget for revenues. We we have a phrase that we use in which we budget realistic, albeit slightly conservative revenues. Um, that helps us ensure that operational expenses will fit within revenue collections for the year, even if revenues come in uh, assuming revenues come in at that slightly conservative level. When we first put the budget together, the two thousand twenty-four budget, we were talking uh, economists were talking recession in two thousand twenty-four, mid-year, maybe later in the year. And so the original estimates that we had in there reflected that information that we had. Most of that talk has now been pushed off to, well, we kind of see that in two thousand twenty-five. There are some, obviously, some big items happening in Washington DC right now, which may um, have a impact on that. Um, but so what we've done as part of this process is we've really kind of taken those constraints off. As you can see on this, we're projecting, sorry, um, let me just step back before um, how we project out our revenues is we take the two thousand twenty-three actuals year-to-date and then we forecast those out through the end of the year. We use that forecast to inform our two thousand twenty-four revenues. So if you look at this chart, the greenish color, we'll call it, that is the comparison of our proposed budget to our forecast. And the bluer hint um, uh, is budget to budget. So you can see on a couple of these, especially uh, sales tax, we are budgeting a twelve percent increase from our two thousand twenty-three budget. Really what we're doing in many of these situations is we have gone ahead and said we're going to assume two thousand twenty-four is a carbon copy of two thousand twenty-three in terms of growth. Um, that's something that we'll have to monitor of, you know, again, there are some items going on right now that that may um, affect that. Um, but we'll just have to monitor that throughout the year as we always do and then make adjustments as necessary. Um, and the bottom line, you can see uh, a four point seven nine increase uh, budget to budget overall. Uh, we talked a little bit about OFD cares last week. And I wanted to bring that back up for you. So the um, the OFD uh, the BLS cares, excuse me. Uh, expenditures include uh, twenty-three FTE. Uh, we're continuing to hire the positions. Um, updated estimates from FIRE are that uh, BLS units will be um, operational in mid-two thousand twenty-four. We are not assuming any revenue uh, from the BLS uh, cares uh, program. Uh, this is consistent with the FCS study for year one of implementation. And so we are covering this with three point nine million dollars of uh, budget stabilization monies in two thousand twenty-four. In talking with FIRE, um, assuming that the program gets up mid uh, two thousand twenty-four, the ground emergency medical transportation funding is about a year in arrears. So even when we start billing those, those probably won't be coming in in two thousand twenty-four. And uh, uh, private insurance will have a two to three month lag. So we feel pretty good about where we are with um, with with the budget for this, excuse me. We feel pretty good about where the budget is with this. If any money does come in, of course, we're going to accept it. We're just not planning on uh, that money coming in right now. Uh, two thousand twenty-four expenditure assumptions, I won't go through this uh, in detail at all, but um, we, you can see that we have the wage increase information that's uh, based on uh, contracts um, for our uh, uh, for our union workers and um, there's also a four point one four percent in there for independents. Uh, medical insurance, uh, we receive uh, this information from AWC. Um, and they have given us a range. So uh, the range started with nine percent on the high end. We we put it out there to be conservative. They've closed that down to a high of seven percent. We still have it or uh, five to seven percent for Kaiser and Regents. As we get the final numbers, we put those in and make any adjustments there. Um, and then we have the known contractual increase from uh, WCIA insurance. It's twenty-five percent increase from two thousand twenty-three. And that's on a big increase in two thousand twenty-three from two. So um, increase there. All other expenditure types are asked to be held at status quo unless there are uh, contractual obligations that we need uh, to meet on that. With that information, then we project out our expenditures for two thousand twenty-four. And so this is for the general fund budget. You have um, the categories on the left-hand side and then the different budgets, two thousand twenty-three, the first column, twenty-four, the variance, and then the percent change. And I will say in that top uh, row of salaries and wages, when we adopted the two thousand twenty-three budget, um, the council will remember that we added a clause in the adopting ordinance that the, even though the BLS cares uh, monies weren't in the budget that was adopted, we were asked to go ahead and proceed and catch up to that later. So this does skew that because they are included in twenty-four, the the, all of those positions, but they're not shown in two thousand twenty-three. So it's not quite as bad as you see here. Um, but you can see the increases uh, throughout uh, the categories for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we had another quest, we had another conversation about the facilities fund. And so this is really uh, mostly an update to the finance committee members um, on the council. Um, in two thousand twenty-three, we created the facilities internal service fund uh, to account for costs related to facilities management. It's really just an accounting treatment change, very akin to when we changed how we accounted for CPND. We moved all of CPND into the development fee fund. And then that's supported uh, by general fund for the activities that aren't development fee um, eligible. So we did the same thing here. I think what happened at uh, Finance Committee is we used kind of a colloquial term of general fund rent. And there was a little bit of confusion about that. So I, we wanted to take a minute here to to clean that up. Um, the funding that the facilities fund collects is through rent and that is to cover their operations, is to cover maintenance on the building as well as any necessary capital down the road. So that two thousand twenty-four budget includes uh, about a million dollars for salaries and benefits. Uh, one point eight million dollars for other operating, which includes facility maintenance. So that's the lion's share of it is is um, service, professional service dollars for any of those facility maintenance types of needs. And then it also has one point two million dollars for capital and Jay will circle back around on that number as he goes through his part. So. Yeah, I think.
So I thought maybe we pause here, Kelly, and see if you have questions for Aaron on this first portion before I jump into the next piece.
Yeah, I've got a question. So so we can start expecting revenue from OFDBLS in two thousand twenty five.
Yes, that is where we are now. So if we get up and running in the mid two thousand twenty four, as is the plan, we should be able to start billing. And then as the G EMT starts catching up, that will start coming in two thousand twenty five as well as the private insurance amounts will start coming in. So yes, we're expecting revenues for the full year of two thousand twenty five, and that includes the period of two thousand twenty four where we bill, but do not receive those monies.
Do you think that's going to help address that dip we see in two thousand twenty five or is that accounted for?
No, it would help address that because that dip includes the roughly four million dollars that we are using a budget stabilization for the BLS program. So when those revenues come in, it should increase our revenues by that equal amount. So the dip won't be quite as large.
Okay, well, that's that's good news.
Council member partially.
Can you remind me on the BLS cares? Is there built in FTE to actually do the billing of to the insurance companies?
Program manager.
Program manager is going to be in charge of that. Thank you.
Great. I think we're okay to move on to Jay's part of the presentation and we'll have more questions along the way.
Okay, so this is something I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. The council is very familiar with our priorities, performance and investment cycle. Although the budget season in terms of our work really starts kind of tonight through the end of the year. We work on our budget year round. This work starts with the council at your annual retreat in January, when we kind of worked to confirm priorities. We includes community engagement. And in this case, we did a community survey this year to kind of ask our community kind of how we're doing and to make sure we're checking in, kind of how we're investing our resources. And then we spent some time with council on your midyear retreat, kind of fine tuning what you heard there and kind of what goes into our budget season. So I mentioned you'll see kind of our priorities within those focus areas that reflect back to our comprehensive plans. You'll see that here. You'll see it again when we talk about two thousand twenty four. The majority, I think what we heard in two thousand twenty three through the survey work and the work with council is that a lot of the priorities that we have within these focus areas are going to continue to be our focus as we move into two thousand twenty four. And we'll have some additional things we'll add to it, but those things include, you know, homelessness, emergency response, public services, work on our downtown ambassadors, affordable housing and homeownership. We've heard a lot about those those topics tonight. Mental health, equity and climate focused, climate change mitigation, environmental protection. Street and sidewalk repair and maintenance. We're not going to talk specifically about that one tonight, but they're we're going to be coming to you in mid November to talk about a transportation benefit district funding and a new source of revenue to specifically address that. That also will speak to our transportation master plan funding, city owned buildings, communication to enhance our transparency and budget and sustainability. And I want to point out that in that although equity and diversity, inclusion and belonging are in here within some of the focus areas. They're really a lens, and we talked about this earlier, that really works through all of the work that we do, as does climate. So we have we have new frameworks that we use for our decision making around climate and around our DEI work, and those are throughout what you see here. I want to start by talking about what is not in the budget that's before you today. As I mentioned, I and the budget team, department directors, we've had to make some hard choices to get us down to a manageable budget deficit. That means several of the items that I consider critical are not included in this at this point. They include. You've heard a lot from the last couple of years in your retreats about the need to grow our legal department. As we've grown our housing homeless programs, as we've grown our climate programs, we've gotten a lot into a lot more complexity of work that needs more legal time and Mark and his team need help. I was able to find funding for one position this year, which I'll talk about later. But Mark asked for four, and I think it's important that you that you know that, that when I ask Mark, what do you really need to keep up? He needs another deputy city attorney and another paralegal on the civil side. And when you look at case counts on the criminal side, we need help in prosecution. We need another another assistant prosecutor, two and another paralegal there. And I'll talk about what was funded, but what's not funded is a deputy, another deputy city attorney, and then the prosecutor assistance, but we were able to fund one paralegal. Because I asked Mark, what's if I can give you one, what's the most important thing I can give you? And he said, I need another paralegal right now to take some relief off of them. So you'll see that here, but there's a lot that isn't here. In finance, the past 10 years, our total FTE count has increased by one hundred and thirty two with no change in payroll staff. So payroll staffing has remained constant during this during this last 10 years. And the total number FTEs is growing, the complexity of our union contracts is growing, and that's putting a strain on the two payroll staff that we currently have. And so Mark or excuse me, Aaron really needs some more help in the finance team in his payroll team. And we're not able to fund that within this budget as proposed to you. As I think all of you know, your human resources director spends a lot of her time negotiating contracts. And although I appreciate Linnea for how much time and energy puts into that and the great union relationships that she has formed. It's not the best use of the person who leads your department to be tied down to negotiating contracts. And so when I, you know, I've talked to Debbie and talked to Lynne about what they need, we need another resource in human resources to help us manage contracts and help us bargain contracts so that Linnea can be more strategically focused on the work of the department. And that's what I need and what we all need. And the same thing with our our service desk, we've grown our employee count. The same problem that occurs in finance occurs within IT services or information services. Our support desk and our and that staffing needs more assistance to kind of help with the growing needs of our city population. So what you'll see here with these support staff positions, and that's what I call them, is they're really a function of we're growing as an organization. And we need to be able to keep pace with some of those support functions that support the work that we're doing, and it's becoming increasingly more difficult to do that. And then I'm going to give it back to Aaron just for a minute because I'm going to talk about the city transition to L and I workers comp because that's not included. And before I give it to Aaron. So why are we talking about this? So our top priority, my top priority is the health and safety of our employees. And I think council knows that we're self insured for our workers comp, which means we use a third party administrator to manage all of our workers comp claims. Most claims go through that process pretty smoothly. However, on occasion, there are complex claims which take further investigation and take a lot longer to resolve. We're also seeing the complexity of things like PTSD claims that are new on the horizon for us that are taking a lot longer to resolve. And for our employees that have those more complex claims, this can be frustrating and at times discouraging. So we've had requests from some of our laborers to consider looking at workers comp through Department of Labor and Industries. So getting away from being self insured in our third party and going directly, which which a lot of other cities do. So we have explored that at their request and and look at the advantages and disadvantages to moving to L and I. And we agree and I agree that it would be good for the city to move in that direction. It allows the final decision on claims to be made by someone not associated with the city. My relationship with our employees is really valuable to me. And having tension on whether a claim is approved or denied at the city level erodes trust and it's really difficult. And I think we're better served having a more independent outside of the city decision making on our L and I claims. And so I would like to get there. It's the one thing that's not funded in this current budget that I want the most, that the city manager wants the most. So if there's something that we can do along the way as we work together to balance the budget, my eyes would be there as the first thing to try to find a way. But I want to have Aaron just talk for a minute about workers comp and this potential move and the finances behind it.
So we just wanted to provide a little bit of context. The council members who are on the finance committee have heard this several times now. But there is a little bit of nuance behind the decision not to join L and I, at least not to fund it as of yet in the budget. So we've been working on this process, I think, since March of last year, exploring moving to L and I. It's a relatively simple process to make the jump. Really, it's just a letter of intent that we want to join L and I. And L and I does the work and then and then we join. So that's a pretty easy part to do. And our desire was to join in January of two thousand twenty four. What we would be charged in the first year is what it's called the base rate for L and I. So it's whatever the rates are for our risk classification at that time. So if with the four point six percent proposed adjustment in the L and I rates, that would be roughly about two point one million dollars citywide. The general fund will have a substantial part of that, mostly because the two highest risk risk classes, excuse me, are police and fire. And so being general fund departments, we would carry the bulk of that that change. Depending on our experience, L and I then has the ability to increase our rates by twenty five percent annually plus any of the of their normal annual annual rate adjustments to come into where we're paying our fair share. The other important part of this and one of the reasons for the decision so far not to include moving to L and I in the budget. The city will continue to be solely responsible for all claims incurred prior to the day we move to L and I. So we will still need to fully fund our L and I fund as we move forward until those claims start to roll off. But it's hard to know how long that will take and it's hard to know exactly how much money we'll need in there. Our L and I fund right now is significantly depleting. We're projecting about two hundred thousand dollars in that fund at the end of this year. So we definitely need to make some changes. You can see on this chart here, the proposed with the four point six percent increase as well as what we have in the city budget at this time, as Jay said, this is a point in time. So these are the main risk classes, the ninety eight percent of our of our city staff fall into one of these four. We do have a few smaller risk classes. But as you can see, we are below in each of them and we are significantly significantly below in law enforcement and fire. City rates in two thousand nineteen were reduced. At that point, the fund had about a two point three, two point four million dollar fund balance. And the decision was made at that time to reduce the rates because of that fund balance and 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 be able to have the opportunity cost of using those general fund dollars elsewhere. They've been held constant since then, and part of that is for a year or so kind of got lost in the sauce. But then over the last couple of years, we've made decision points to keep the rates where they were. Last year, when we were budgeting for the two thousand twenty three budget, we were wondering, well, we know we're going to have the RFA vote coming up, so we don't know what that will mean if the RFA leaves to our claim. So we held them flat for that reason and so on and so forth. So there's been good reasons why we haven't adjusted them. We need to adjust them this year and we need to adjust them this year regardless of whether we move to L and I or not. And so the baseline does include seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to adjust for our rates. That won't necessarily be enough the first year. We still may need to, you know, we've been funding, I think, over the last two years, we've put one point five million dollars of year end fund balance above policy into the fund as well to help shore it up, and we're still down to about two hundred thousand dollars. So this is really the first bite of the apple. We want to see where this increase will get us. At least we know in future years, we believe that it wouldn't have to be as large an adjustment. But at some point we'll hit that equilibrium. And then we can start ratcheting down if we move to L and I and the claims start rolling off of our responsibility. Once we move to L and I, anything that happens from that point forward is the responsibility of that funding there. So the city will, we're going to need to continue. If we move to L and I, we'll have that cost of roughly two point one million dollars. But we'll still have to be collecting our workers compensation charges for a few years. So that's the context behind that that we've provided to the finance committee and we wanted to make sure we're all on the same understanding there.
Aaron, I just realized that there's a part of this I don't understand, and that's that two point one million if it to sort of to buy in to L and I and pay on some estimated rates. But does that become credit or do we just pay those higher rates? So that's just a cost for the first year?
That's just the that would be our cost for their services over year one. So that is the the every paycheck. That piece of the the cost would get transferred to L and I, and then we are on their role. So that it serves as their cash to be able to fund claims as they occur and they move forward.
But then our our experience rating, our safety record in the future may lower that amount, but we would have to pay that two point one million the first year as premiums while still maintaining our self insured claims.
Correct. And quite honestly, we believe that our experience rate will force that rate up before we we lower down. So yeah, I we think we're coming in kind of at that base rate, which is the sweetheart deal, if you will, for the first for the first year. Then with experience, the experience rate needs to be reduced over three years. So once a claim hits, it stays on your experience for three years. So it would be some point in the future that that would hit that equilibrium.
Thank you. I'm very much in support of going to L and I, but I understand that this is not a moment to invest extra millions of dollars in the transition. Go ahead, council member Madron.
Is two point one million the number that was that finance committee?
No, the number we've increased it for the proposed four point six percent increase.
Okay.
And the number that we were using a finance committee that we changed it here to, that was our estimate on the general fund impact.
Okay.
Not the citywide. So we've just eliminated all of that and said the citywide impact estimate to be two point one now.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Well, and one thing that we talked about in the finance committee is we don't have to buy in to L and I on the first of the year. So it's possible that we could look at what we have available from year end funds and buy in midyear. That's a decision that we could make a few months in, once we see how how the budget is shaping up at that time.
All right, I think Kelly's bringing me back. Okay, Aaron mentioned ten million dollars in enhancement requests, about seven point three million dollars of those requests hit the general fund. So we had a lot of requests from departments for items they deem they need to deliver their services. And 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 about five hundred thousand dollars in requests from council members or from other agencies that we partner with as part of our work, as part of our work plan. On the department side, departments requested 12 new FTEs. I mentioned some of them are in legal, HR, finance, fire. Other departments had requests as well. We had requests in the fire department as well. Some of these we talked about already. We also need to find funding to for two replacement fire apparatus. So right in about the middle of the page, you're going to point six million dollar request. We need two new fire trucks three years from now. It takes three years from the time you order to get the new vehicles based on the schedule they're on. So we have ordered those vehicles, knowing that we've got to find a way over the next three years to So we have ordered those vehicles knowing that we've got to find a way over the next three years to fund them. So we've, 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 we've done that work and I'm going to be working with the finance committee and the council on a separate plan for how we address the funding of fire apparatus. But this just shows you that if we were funding within our baseline year over year, what we really need, the kinds of dollars that it takes to invest in public safety in the right way. So I want to, I want to highlight that. And again, there's going to be more work with you separate from this budget discussion on how we, how we, we pay for those. For the council requests. The Olympia Historical Society presented me and I think a couple of council members with requests for two FTEs. To support the Bigelow House and to help manage historic properties. I expressed to them when I received this request, it would be extremely difficult to fulfill. Especially in a time with the budget constraints for their end and especially in a time when, as you'll see later, I'm proposing reductions across departments. To, to be able to balance our budget. So I, that's not included in your budget at this point in time. And I know Councilmember Madron sent you all an email yesterday. Around a Thurston Conservation District request. This is an extension of work that we're already doing around our urban farmlands. It's, and I'll let her speak to that one if you want to take a moment.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So I sent, I'm sorry, I sent it late last night, but the, the proposal from the Thurston Conservation District to continue the work that we've done. With them on community gardens, food security, urban agriculture. Part of it is around urban agriculture, technical assistance and help, helping to. Bolster the, the farm your yard program, which is what they've used to connect our vacant property registration to. A bulk of it is to really get some community gardens on the ground. So we've had an ILA with them for the past year to start doing some of the work. Community engagement, identification of sites to, to move forward on community gardens and they have. Three to four projects that are ready to go. They've got partnerships, they've built with community organizations. Who have those connections in the community to make them happen. This is, this work is several years in the making. You know, this, this started, I mean, it's in our comprehensive plan that everyone is within walking or biking distance of a place to grow food. In two thousand seventeen, as I mentioned earlier this evening, the council passed a resolution saying that they wanted. Community gardens within a half mile of every home. We've made no progress on that since then, unfortunately. But we're, if we, if we continue this work with the conservation district, we're really like on the verge of making some real progress. It's very exciting and it's, it's exciting to. That they've built the relationships that we've, we haven't had the capacity or expertise to build. It's modeled after an approach that the Pierce Conservation District has taken. Actually, it was, it's a. When Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland was on the Tacoma City Council, she wanted it to be a goal that they had more community gardens than any other city. In Tacoma and they formed that relationship with Pierce Conservation District and now they've got like ninety seven gardens. I'm not saying we got to be in competition with Tacoma, but we've got to up our game a bit. And so, so I could say a lot more about this because I'm very passionate about it. But what we talked about on the finance committee is because, because this is one time funds, they're not. That this would fund another year of an ILA, it's one time funds. So what kind of one time funds could we use to. Keep this work going forward. So that's not in competition with the general fund. We still have a hundred thousand dollars for council gold money for this year that could go towards it. We also talked about potentially using some of the economic development reserve. We saw through Olympia Strong and through our community survey that right behind rent, renters are. It's, it's food that they're struggling to pay for. So we could take the, we could take some money from the economic development reserve, potentially pay that back with year end funds. We could also, you know, use council gold money from this year and maybe half a council gold money for next year. And then, you know, the rest pull from economic development reserves. But I think, I think we've got a pathway forward. To use one time money for this one time costs and really keep this momentum up and finally make some progress on these longstanding goals that we've had for our community.
I, I want to ask Councilmember Madron the question I asked at finance committee. Would it be possible to wait until we know what is it, the money or funds above policy? And I'd like the other two to hear what your answer was.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I always say year end funds. I'm sorry. It's, I do too. I'll get there one day. So the reason that it won't, it's not workable to wait until we see how much is in year end funds. Is because if you, if we're going to get gardens on the ground this year, they've got to be built before the growing season. If you, and if we wait until May or June to have a contract with the conservation district. We've already missed an entire growing season and it's a setback in all of this work. And there's potential partnerships that can be lost and there's, there's trust that could be eroded too, because people are like ready to go. So that, that's why it needs to be, we need to be certain about what we're going to be doing in two thousand twenty four with this partnership.
Thank you.
Yes, Jay, I just, first of all, that's that three hundred thousand dollar. Figure for Bigelow House. That's the first time I'm even seeing a number attached to that. Did you combine the two halftime that they requested as one FTE?
Because when I looked at their request, I re-looked at it just the other day. It, it adds up to two FTE.
Yeah.
And so I figure salary and benefits for, it's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars per employee. So it might be conservative, it might be too big. But I, I did my best to kind of take a swag to say if we're talking about two full-time FTE salary and benefits to manage that, that's probably what we're going to be pretty close to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Okay, well, we're glad to see you on the screen. And I'll just say, if there's a way to shake the couch cushions, but that urban ag. Work is, is at the top of my priorities for discretionary funds.
Okay. And I think we can find, I think we can find a pathway on that one. I think there's a few different options we talked about at finance, but I definitely think there's a pathway here.
Okay, and now Councilmember Winn does have a question.
Thanks, Clark. You got my back. Is that something that needs to be decided in tonight's meeting? The, the question around the partnership and the, the urban ag?
Uh, no, I think I've got some, some good feedback tonight that you'd like to find me to find a way to get that included. So I'll work through the finance committee and in further iterations of this. And by the time we come back to council, next time we'll bring you a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to transition to. Aaron and I both mentioned, we've got some minor additions to the budget that I'm proposing for you. In the area of public safety, our public defender salary needs to be increased for our public defender. So we need to make sure that we're within the market and comparable to other jurisdictions. We compete for our contracted public defenders. So we certainly want to make sure that we're paying them at the, at the rate everyone else is. So. As we've talked to Diane Whaley and, and gotten information, we need to adjust their salaries as well. A, a small one, we also compete for pro temp judges and we need to make sure our pro temp judge pay is, is adequate. So there's a small amount there. We talked about this earlier. If this, this budget assumes that DID moves forward and if it does, we lose funding from the PBIA for the downtown ambassador program. As council also is aware, we used to fund ambassadors, a portion of ambassadors. Through our community development block grant funding and you got feedback early this year from Darian and, and others that HUD really thinks we should stop doing that. So we're, we're not doing that anymore. We're pulling that out of CDBG funding. So this hundred and eight thousand dollars that you see here is. The combination of those two sources and, and increasing the general fund to cover the full cost of that program. And again, we'll have more discussions as the DID moves forward about how, what that looks like, but that's what this dollar amount here reflects full funding for that program. As you know, we're exploring a youth council. There is funding and you're going to get an update. I think, I think community livability gets an update on youth council tomorrow. And the full council shortly thereafter, but there's funding in here in, in next year to implement, to start to implement the youth council. We also talked about the DID assessment. I've got thirty five thousand here. I think as Mike showed, not all of that is general fund funded. Some of it comes out of parks, some of it comes out of parking. But again, it's, it's, it's another piece of the budget puzzle here. Two other positions that don't affect the general fund. One is a stormwater FTE that, that oversees our municipal stormwater permit compliance. We need another position to help us do that. And then one of the things I learned from talking to the utility staff is within the storm sewer ops. We've got fifteen FTEs and one ops group with one op supervisor. So span of control is a huge issue within that group. So they need another op supervisor there to balance out span of control within that utility group. We'll be talking about utility rates later in, in a future date with council and the finance committee. Both of those positions are included within the rate that you'll see coming later. So no general fund impact. We talked under well-planned city, we talked about a federal lobbyist. We have brought one on board. Their annual contract is seventy five thousand dollars a year. I am hoping, and I think you are too, that we are spending money to make money and bringing on a federal lobbyist. This brings us access to a lot of resource at the federal level on a more direct basis. Our lobbyist is already working with staff. We'll be scheduling some time with council here soon, but they're already working with staff and particularly with Darian and Pamela, who are going after some significant federal. Grant dollars. They're already working with them and helping them find a pathway and make sure those get in front of the right people. So. I think this is going to be money well spent. Another big need that we've put off for a few years is another facilities FTE to maintain our fire stations. And we put this one off last year as we waited to see what would happen with our FA. But our facilities group has been asking me for the last three years, we need another FTE to help take care of fire departments. And throughout the years, this goes back a long time ago, we used to have a lot of firefighters who on the side were carpenters and plumbers and electricians. And so they kind of helped themselves. So a lot of that building maintenance was done by firefighters on their off time. It's not a sustainable way to maintain our buildings and a lot of those folks have retired. And we need to, we need an FTE in place to manage those buildings. So this budget includes funding for an FT as I proposed it here. Salaries and benefits. So I think I scared the, the finance committee when I had three hundred forty six thousand dollars for a new facilities FT. I think they were all raising their hand to say, I'll do that for that money. But there's some one time money in here for vehicles and supplies. And the salary portion is about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So that's the ongoing other stuff we'll take care of. On the organizational excellence, we talked about, Aaron already talked about the city workers comp fund. So this is our third party administrator fund. So no matter what decision we make on moving to L and I, we've got to maintain this other fund. It'll dwindle over time. But seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is in the baseline for that fund. Longevity pay for independent employees. So I know this is a tough budget and I know we're going to have to make reductions. But one of the things that we, that we cut back in the recession for all groups was longevity pay. This is kind of an annual pay that employees receive based on years of service. And over the years, the unions, pretty much all of them have negotiated longevity pay back into their contracts. And for the last two years, the independent employees have asked me, hey, city manager, when do we get our longevity pay back to match everybody else's? And so it's a hundred thousand dollars to add that back into your budget. I think the independent employees have been patient in their requests for this and I very much would like to add longevity pay back into the baseline. It creates equity amongst all of our employee groups in terms of pay. And then strategic communication. So we've talked a lot about the need to have our own in-house AV expert. This also ties into our decision to move away from TC Media and do our own in-house broadcasting. So we've, we've actually hired someone who's sitting in the booth tonight, Andrew, on an emergency contract. And like we, I still need council to approve an FTE in a, a new FT in the two thousand twenty four budget. And again, this one's budget neutral because the, the money comes out of our, our, our franchise fees. So I'm going to move out of this, but any questions on anything that's proposed in my ads right now? Councilmember Madron.
I think I asked this last week, but I was so tired that I don't remember the answer. So downtown ambassador program is a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Yep.
That is two staff at crew?
That is two, two full-time FTE. We already have some general fund funding that's already in place. This is the gap. This fills the gap.
Got it. Okay, okay. I was, I was going to say, wait, we need to pay those people more.
So we have, we have, we have about half of it already in place. This is the half that was funded by PBA and CDBG, PBA and CDBG.
Okay, great. Thanks. I did ask that last week and I think you said the exact same thing.
Yeah, good question. Oh, Councilmember Quinn.
Yeah, um, Jay, a question about the youth council. So forty thousand. So, so I, I sort of say this, well, I shouldn't assume that the youth council will be, will pass. With council's vote, but should it pass? I understand the timeline is looking a little bit different than we had originally thought with sort of a, an ease into it. Next year and getting it more set up and then. Twenty twenty five looking to launch like having, having young people in the seat. So is that why we're seeing forty thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Susan, I, I talk, I've been talking with Susan about this. I know this has to come to council, but one of the proposals that we have in terms of how we get there with the budget is. In order to seat a youth council, that work needs to start in November, December. I think you know, that you know all this. For the rest of the council, that work needs to start in November, December. That's going to be really difficult to do this year and get them stood up. So the idea is to keep some money in the budget to keep the youth engaged into next year. And that we start that, start seating them towards the latter part of next year so that they're fully in place in two thousand twenty five. And I, I think that's a plan that Councilmember Winn, that you're supportive of at this moment in time. But if not, again, we can have more conversations as that comes in front of council, but that's, that's what's proposed right now.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to having the, the full council hearing about it next month. I think it'll. I think it'll be really fun. I think you'll be really impressed with the amount of work done and, and we have some cool presenters. So. Uh, yeah, I just, just another kind of note on that, Jay, is that, how did you land at forty thousand?
I talked to my best friend Susan and I said, hey, what do you think we're going to need in the budget to keep the consultant engaged with our youth? To keep paying the stipends for our youth that are engaged and we worked up that budget together.
Thanks so much.
I just wanted to add real quick that I'm really glad to see the youth council included. I think that we've been working with them for the past year and this is a promise that we've made to them. We've had youth come in here and advocating. For us about their future. And so I, I'm, I'm really happy to see this included.
Any other questions on additions? Again, we'll have a lot more time. Okay, we're down the homestretch here. I'm going to talk about our pathway to get, to get balanced. And again, this is as of tonight. This pathway that I'm going to share with you tonight is likely going to change along the way and I'm going to keep updating this along the way. So. As it sits tonight, as we've discussed, there are some more conversations we had around a few of the items on the list. So we'll have to come back, but I want to give you a sense of how we got there. First, there's where we started. So when I first got the department directors together to start working on budget. We had a beginning net position. We were, we were minus fourteen million dollars. We had a fourteen million dollar deficit we were working from when I first started meeting with departments. And when Joan and Aaron first gave me the first look at the budget in August. And then after they woke me up from fainting. We went to work. We, we did make some corrections. So Joan and her team do an awesome job of going back in to see what the departments have entered. And sometimes we get, find things that are double counted. Sometimes we find, find things that are in there wrong. We may likely find some more of those as we continue on this process along the way, but today we found about two point six million dollars of those. We accounted for the, they gave me a budget that did not account for any use of budget stabilization reserve. Because I wanted to know what it looked like if we didn't do that. So now we've put that back in. So that brings us down to about seven point eight million dollars. Next week, we take into account all those things that I've proposed to be added to the budget. That are general fund funded. And that brings you up to a little less than nine point two million dollars. So we went the other way. Over the past week, as numbers started to finalize and, and Aaron mentioned in terms of insurance, we've made some adjustments. Finance took another look at revenues and also made another significant adjustment to revenues based on collections for two thousand twenty three. So we know that WCA rates, we thought were going to be at thirty nine percent. They're only at twenty five percent. So we're able to shave some dollars off. We've fine tuned some of the wage adjustments that we had in there. We, we, we got our medical rates finalized. So we're able to make adjustments there. Uh, we, we, we got our medical rates finalized, so we're able to make adjustments there. Uh, and then I talked about revenue. So that brought us down, uh, to about six point seven million dollars. So this next piece is really, um, where I'm, I'm making some recommendations and we don't have to land tonight. I want to give you a sense of the levers that are at council's disposal to get us to a balanced budget. And again, these are going to change over the, over the coming, um, month or so as we bounce budget. Uh, but here's some of the levers that we have to pull. We're trying to get the building repair and replacement into the baseline. We've been funding it at year end, year over year. But for this budget, I told Aaron and Joan, put it in so I can see what it looks like. They put it in, it's going to be difficult to do. So I'm recommending that you don't put it in the baseline and you continue to fund it at year end for now. So that's, that's lever one. I asked Aaron and Joan in terms of bringing me a sustainable budget to, to put in the amount of reserves we need in the fire department budget for apparatus and vehicle replacement. That's about five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's, that's money we've not historically been able to budget. We're still not able to get there. That's another one for me that doesn't allow us to really state unequivocally, we have a sustainable budget. So I'm proposing that, that come back out. Um, and we're going to have to develop a plan for replacing apparatus outside of the baseline. Um, we've anticipated some hiring process savings. So a lot of those twenty-three FTEs in the fire department, nine of them are going to come on board, um, this year, early next year. The, the balance of them, we're going to be close to mid-year before they all come on board. So we're anticipating that in the budget that, um, we can anticipate some salary savings already upfront by anticipating that those FTEs will come on board mid-year. Um, we normally carry a labor reserve. And this year in particular, as you know, we're doing a salary survey for all of our independent employees. And we've carried a reserve, uh, we carry reserve every year in our labor reserve, but this year in particular was to help, um, with impacts to departments for what comes out of that, um, that survey. We are still going to do the salary survey and we are still going to adjust um, our independent employees' pay to what they need to be paid for that's compared, on comparison to their peers in other cities. At this point in time, I'm going to ask the departments to absorb that into their budgets. They're going to have to find a way to pay for that within their budgets. I've talked to them about that. I think we can find a pathway. I've got more work to do with department directors, but I think we can absorb those into the budget without needing to carry a significant reserve. But I'm, I'm probably going to get back to you on that. So I got some more work to do on that. But right now, that's something we could, I think we can pull out. I think we can get there. We also always carry, um, about a half a million dollars in what I call general fund contingency that we have in there at the beginning of budget balancing, that we try to carry throughout the process to give room for council to make um, changes to the budget. That's already out. So, um, that's a proposal I have for you to get there. Aaron mentioned the use of fund balance on a one-time basis. Um, as I mentioned, the finance committee, we had at year end this year, uh, two point seven million dollars of fund balance over policy. Uh, and at that time, I recommended to the finance committee and the council that, hey, let's use that to buy down um, the budget stabilization reserve and not take so much out of it for BLS and, and cares. Now I'm saying, don't do that. I'm saying, take that two point seven and use it to balance the budget for twenty twenty-four and go back to our original plan of using four million dollars of budget stabilization reserve to be paid back in the future by, by the BLS and, uh, cares program. So that's a recommendation I have for you. I think that's an easy lever for you to pull. Um, I do want to point out, um, and Aaron said this, as we talk about budget sustainability, we've got, that we've got more work to do because that's one-time money. So as we get into twenty twenty-five, we're going to be looking at, if we don't get new revenues, we're going to look for future adjustments. That leaves us about a million dollars short. And, um, so I'm proposing, um, about a million dollars of general fund operating reductions. Um, the department directors are hard at work right now, um, developing a prioritized list for me and for you about where they could see reductions to close the million dollar gap. Um, obviously, if, if council's not comfortable with any of these levers, then we're going to have to find further reductions. Councilmember Madron mentioned and finance committee mentioned that there's also some other sources of revenue that we haven't talked about. One is, um, and I'll just, I'll just talk about that real quick. In future budget reviews, we'll all bring the economic, um, recovery fund, the economic development reserves fund balance. You know how much is in there. So you might want to use some of that for some of these things that are one-time. Um, we can look at, uh, real estate excise tax. We have some flexibility to move some from capital to operating. We need to do a little more work there. That was an, uh, idea that came out of finance committee. Can we move some, some REIT monies that we have some flexibility with from capital to operating on a short term to help balance the budget? And, and reduce the need for reduction. So this is just again, a snapshot tonight of how we could get there. Um, I wanted to get some just initial feedback from you on anything that, um, you're either overly concerned about or, or really struggling with, so that I can continue to work this with the finance committee and with the department directors. And then we're done for the night after that.
So that one million and just general fund reductions, can you speak to, you know, how you're working with staff and like what, what comes next to identify what that would be?
Thank you for that. So, um, I've given them all till this Friday to give me, so a million dollars is about one percent of our general fund, uh, general fund. Um, I've asked them to bring me a three percent, what a three percent reduction looks like prioritized within their departments. I've, um, some of the guidance I've given them is to, um, not cut training and travel. Um, we've, we've made that mistake in the past. And when we start cutting training and travel, we stop being innovative as a staff and we stop staying, um, up to date with, with changing trends. And that's not who we are as an organization. So I've said, you can't cut there. Um, I want you to do everything in your power to preserve staff, to not cut staff. But I want you to look at every other possibility. Now, the reality is most of them, then when they bring me three percent, when you go that deep, it's, it, it gets into people. But I don't think we're going to need to go that deep. It's just going to give us a range of things to look at, um, rather than saying, bring me exactly a million and then if there's things on that list I don't like, then I'm short, right? So, so that's, that's kind of the process. They'll, I'll get those lists on Friday. I'll start to work with Aaron and Joan, the department directors to go through them so that I can bring you a set of recommendations out of that list that I think are manageable within the budget. And again, my goal is to stay away from cuts to staff.
Councilmember Parsley.
I, I do have, um, two questions, uh, they're sort of linked, but before I start there, I would just encourage my councilmates to recognize that the staff is going to be doing the three percent cut and that we need to, um, be very cautious about what we recommend. And if there's any cool new policies or fun things that we want to do, we should really wait until year end or funds above policy and then be very cautious and recognize that all of the staff that are working so hard to fulfill our policies are making these cuts and we have to honor that ourselves. Um, and just look in the ways we can help with this budget stabilization because as Aaron showed us at the work session last week, we're heading towards having to do a levy lid lift and twenty twenty-five, we haven't even begun to talk about yet. Uh, it's going to be a heavy lift too, unless we make changes. Um, so I just, that's my coaching. I've been watching this process over the last year and a half, two years and, um, just want us to recognize that we've put a big bow wave out and somehow they managed to reduce most of it, but now it comes to the crunch. And I support a hundred percent the farming package, by the way, and the youth council. As that's not what I'm talking about. Just be careful as we go forward and we look at our retreat and where we want to go. My two questions is, um, and they're linked. How much is remaining in the budget stabilization fund? And don't we have a policy on payback on that? And what's that look like for BLS and cares?
Yeah, so I'll start and I might ask Joan or Aaron to jump in if I get anything wrong. Um, uh, our budget within the budget stabilization reserve, um, to include the four million dollars for BLS is about ten point one million dollars. So once you allocate the four million dollars to BLS cares, you have about a six point one, six point two million dollar balance in your budget stabilization reserve. That's over and above your ten percent reserve, uh, your emergency reserve that we're required to carry that we never dip into. So you have, you still have some flexibility there of another six million dollars, um, of flexible funding that you can use for a variety of different purposes. But right now you've got four million of it allocated. Um, we do every year within the budget, just like our other reserves. Um, we do increase funding within budget stabilization. We've been doing that over the, over the last few years. We started at eight million dollars. And that fund has grown because we, we contribute to it just like we do with all of our reserves. The other question that I, I talked to Aaron and Joan about is I think we should have a conversation with finance committee next year when we talk about budget sustainability. Rather than to continue to, continue to contribute, continue to contribute, sorry, it's late. Um, to that fund, maybe we should set, what's the level we want it to be at? And we don't keep contributing to it year over, because you've got this fund that's growing that you're not accessing. So, um, maybe eight million dollars is the number that it should always be at. And we only put money in if we fall below it. Um, and then when it comes to BLS cares, the, 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 what we set in motion is once they, the fire accounts for the costs of the program, any dollars above and beyond come back to repay the budget stabilization repair fund. That's likely going to take years to occur, um, at that, at that rate. So is that, did I get them all?
You did great. Um, and I would just put a check mark on work plan is to look at the policies, um, of funds and repayment. And what are we doing, including the amounts?
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I just want to say job well done on closing this gap. Um, you know, it's pretty significant, but, um, I also appreciate, uh, what you just said about the, um, budget stabilization fund and obviously, uh, you didn't just jump to that as a solution, which I appreciate. Um, and very much looking forward to, uh, this list that you're going to be recommending. So, um, I, I trust you. Um, and so I'm just looking forward to, to seeing that. Um, and I'm sure it won't be, um, it won't be easy, but, um, I, I just appreciate the, the conservative approach that's being taken here.
Thank you. And councilmember, when did you come on with a comment?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, and I'm sort of, uh, yeah, there's so much here. I sort of have this hand that like is going up and down. Um, yeah, so, uh, I am, thank you, Jay, for the work. Um, and for, for the rest of the city staff and team, and I'm really looking forward to, uh, what, uh, the executive team brings you when it comes to that, uh, you know, conservative three percent, but maybe one percent. Um, I guess this is a little bit for my colleagues and then I have a question for Jay. Uh, something that I've brought up kind of here and there, and I would love to make some progress on, um, soon. Uh, and possibly in our retreat, that'll be time. Um, but uh, really, really interested in taking a look at our advisory groups, all the boards, um, committees and commissions and seeing where it might be time to sunset and where it might be time to combine. And maybe that doesn't make sense for some of them, I understand. Um, but that, again, looking at, uh, not just, uh, for expenses, certainly that, but also for, uh, that, that work balance as well. Um, and, um, realizing that some of, uh, some of those advisory groups, um, will come to, uh, the sort of the chairs, the beginning of the year chairs committee, um, or chairs meeting with the community livability and public safety committee and are saying, hey, you know what? We would like meteor work plans. We would like, you know, there's, uh, more to do, some of that. And, uh, there are, I think, ways that we, um, can kind of satisfy all of these different buckets. Um, so, uh, yeah, I hope, I hope that, um, you'll will join me, all my councilmates, um, in looking at ways that we can sunset and ways that we combine, um, some of those advisory groups. I think that'll make an impact, uh, on the budget as well long-term. Um, question for Jay, something I kind of heard is, um, uh, talking about our, our, our media services and how we've, uh, made this emergency hire. And then I kind of heard you say something about, uh, you know, we need to decide about like continue funding it. Um, I for one would like to continue funding, um, our, our new hire. So can you kind of talk about that a little bit? I just, I just want to make sure I didn't gloss over something there.
Yeah, and I don't want to make Andrew in the next room nervous, right? Because we brought Andrew on board with some funding that we had available in twenty twenty-three. But it is our intention that we, um, we keep him on board into twenty twenty-four and we have money to pay for it. So there are, there are money, our cable franchise fees that used to go to TC media. Um, we'll bring those back in-house and we'll use those to fund Andrew's position and some other consultant services that Kelly is working on that will help us, um, live stream our meetings over multiple platforms other than just our, our, our website. So she's got some other creative things. And then Andrew's also going to serve a really important role in being our AV tech specialist in all of our rooms, which is, I know something all of you have really wanted for a long time too. When we get stuck on a Tuesday night with a technology problem and all of us are looking at each other and other microphones work, it's really hard. So, uh, he's here to do that work as well. So there is funding in the budget. It's not general fund money, so, uh, it doesn't affect the general fund. So the only impact and the reason it's on the list is I need an approval of a new FTE into next year. So Kelly's using an existing FT that she has for now, um, to put him in. And we'll just need to allocate a new FTE and then to change the funding source from where, where it went to TC media to coming into the general fund to support it. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks a lot. So I was, yeah, I was a little like, I was getting nervous. I was with Andrew standing there. I was getting nervous.
He's not going anywhere.
Okay, that, yeah, that's helpful for me. Thank you.
Great. And I, I have a couple of thoughts. Um, one, since you just referred to the retreat, it's my understanding and it's my hope that we're going to take a broad look at revenue. And before we talk about any specific vehicle and we have to run a campaign or whatever, that we, we stop and talk about, um, sort of the level of service against the size of the community and all the possible evolving forms of revenue, because we have a few that have kind of gone extinct that we used to count on. So, so I, I, I'm looking forward to that conversation. And then something for a parking lot. Uh, on your, your list, you had labor reserve and the independent salary study. And while I value doing a salary study against other cities, um, I'm really interested in our getting to addressing comparable work, um, historically gendered jobs and, and, uh, creating equal pay. And I know that's going to require some adjustments. There was hesitation a few years ago because it could be a considerable adjustment. But I, I think that, um, if we're going to have all of our visioning words mean something real, we also have to treat, you know, um, comparable work with comparable compensation. So I, I just want to put that in sort of the parking lot as we're moving forward, that that's, I, I, that's a bigger lift, but more important to me than, uh, the peer cities part is to remain competitive and keep being able to draw great people here, but.
And if I could take that out of your parking lot, I'm going to take it out of your parking lot because it's part of that study. So part of the analysis that we're doing is both looking at compensation levels and pay equity. So we've got to, that's why we brought a consultant on board to help us do that. In fact, the department directors, we just got a presentation from, um, the consultant group at our executive team meeting on Thursday. I'm quite impressed with the process they're going to use. They're going to start all the way back at job classifications and make sure they're, they're where they need to be and look at how we bring people in and, and steps and levels and all that. So it's going to include a pay equity piece too. So I just want to assure you that's going to happen.
Thank you, Jay. I, I really appreciate that. Any other comments on this section? Would you have any more concluding comments?
I'll just say in conclusion, um, it, it takes a village to get here. Um, I really want to thank Aaron and Joan, um, and the entire finance team for the hours of work that they're putting in, uh, on the weekends. That will continue as we get, um, to the, but through the budget process. I, I, I can't do this without their expertise, um, and prodding me along the way and to the department directors. Um, we're partners in this. We are, we are one team. We work as a first team. I know that me bringing news to them and I need them to look at reductions is hard for them to hear. But I also know that, um, they're here to support all of us and each other and we're going to find a way. So I want to thank them for their partnership as well.
Thank you, Joan, Aaron and Jay for keeping us going on the budget. Appreciate that. And now I'm going to entertain brief council reports on intergovernmentals. Councilmember, when do you have a report this evening?
Nothing that can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parsley.
Jay just gave my report for finance. My other one, I'll wait till next week.
Yes, councilmember Payne.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
And I'll just say once again, Arbor Day celebration, squawks in park, ten to two on Saturday. Meet at the Rose picnic shelter and city manager, do you have a report?
I have fifteen items. Just kidding. I have nothing to report.
I have nothing to report.
With no further business before us, the Olympia City Council will adjourn at nine thirty PM.